Good evening and welcome, everyone. I'm calling the March 4th regular City Council meeting to order. And I'd like to ask those who would like to join the council, myself, in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before I move on to the next item, which is special business, I'd like to make sure if you're here to speak tonight, you've had an opportunity to sign up. Tisha, there is a sign-up sheet? Okay? So if you have not, maybe we could leave that down on the table. Please sign up. Under Special Business, ID 0374, the Youth Advisory Board of Issaquah is doing a presentation tonight. And I'd like to invite Giada and Brooke to make that presentation. Thanks.
I'm Giada Oliva, and I'm 13 years old. I go to Issaquah Middle School. We're so grateful to be here and to share to all of you about the Issaquah Youth Advisory Board and what we do and strive to do. As well as the goals we have set -- wait. Oh, my God. I'm so sorry. As I'm talking, there will be a running slideshow behind us showing the fun we have and what we do while working on the board. This is the Issaquah Youth Advisory Board 2030 school year in existence. The board was created back when the community center opened in 1996. Since then, we have had over 250 youth join and serve on the board. The Youth Advisory Board exists to help give youth a voice and spread their ideas and opinions as it states in our mission -- current mission statement, which reads, "The city of Issaquah believes that youth are not only future leaders of tomorrow, but also civic contributors of today." The Issaquah Youth Advisory Board exists to create and encourage both youth leadership and service opportunities in order to develop leadership skills, highlight youth ideas and opinions, and unite students in the Issaquah School District. The Youth Advisory Board is made up of 40 members, all selected through an application open to the public in April. If our applications get accepted, then we can go to an individual and group interview, where we plan an event working as a team. If these interviews get accepted, then we get invited to the group. The interviews and application are reviewed and planned by kids currently in the board. YAB is a one-year commitment, though most members choose to do multiple years, and they are welcome to do so as long as they are active and contributing to our team. We have members from all schools within the Issaquah School District: Issaquah, Liberty, Skyline, and Gibson Eck, Beaver, Lake, Pine Lake, Issaquah, Maywood, and Pacific Cascade. We don't just have public schools, but also people who are homeschooled and people who can go to private schools like Eastside Prep, Overlake, and Lakeside. Our group of people meets on the first and third Tuesday of every month for about an hour and a half, talking and planning our events. Working with the Youth Advisory Board has been one of the most fun things I've ever done, and I love all the volunteering that we get to do.
Hi. My name is Brooke Fraser. I'm 15 years old, and I go to Issaquah High School. I'm going to tell you about the subcommittees of the Youth Advisory Board. So first, Middle School Action focuses on planning events for younger kids. They typically plan about three events per year, and recently, they organized the Fall Fun Fest for preschoolers, which was a blast. I volunteered at it. And then the high schoolers are split amongst the other subcommittees, the first of which being High School Action. And High School Action is very similar to Middle School Action in that they plan fun like parties and events for the Issaquah community. Past projects have included a Harry Potter night, science symposium, and basketball tournament. They are currently working on the ISE Kids Triathlon, which will happen on the 2nd of June. You're all invited. It's very fun. So I am a member of the last subcommittee, which is Teen Advocacy. At the moment, we are producing a TV show to talk about hot topics within Issaquah, especially concerning youth. And we are organizing the State of Mind Conference to discuss mental health, body image, and relationships among teenagers in Issaquah. So that is on March 30th. You are all welcome to that as well. And also, members of the board also actively participate on predominantly adult boards and commissions. So, for example, I am a member of -- recently interviewed and joined the Human Services Commission. And we also have representatives on the Economic Vitality Commission, the Issaquah Park Board, and the Transportation Advisory Board. So finally, our community service coordinator organizes volunteer projects, like our monthly work at the food bank. So we work to make the community better in all aspects. Finally, thank you to Councilmember Hunt for emailing us a couple questions prior to this presentation. We want to make sure that your questions have been answered. So I will be asking questions, and Giada will answer them. So what are ways for youth to get involved with this board or other boards, commissions, civic engagement opportunities? Also, does this board interact with or work with any other boards, commissions, groups in the town or regionally?
Beyond becoming an actual board member through the application process, youth may volunteer their time and energy at events planned by us. Yeah. As Brooke mentioned, Youth Advisory Board advocates for youth representation on adult predominant civic boards and commissions. We believe that the youth member benefits from this experience, but also the adults benefit from a youth voice. We have worked with Influence of Choice, Issaquah Schools Foundation, Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, Samamish Board, and Issaquah Highlands Youth Council, just to name a few.
And secondly, what is the best way to keep up with topics being discussed and being worked on by the Youth Advisory Board?
You all have an open invitation to attend our YAB meetings on the first and third Tuesdays of every month at the community center. Additionally, Mayor Mary Lou has invited us to present here, as we are now, on a more frequent basis. We hope to be back soon.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Giada and Brooke, I just want to thank you for coming tonight and for letting me come to your meeting last week. It is really impressive to see what you guys are working on, the huge body of projects that you have, and how you organize yourself. It really is a great fertile ground for growing future leaders. So thank you for coming tonight. And also, I just wanted to point out, we do have the staff liaison Cathy with us tonight. So great work, and thank you very much for the report.
Thank you for inviting us.
The next item on our agenda this evening is ID 0415, Citywide Strategic Plan. And it's a feedback on the context statement. So this item is coming before council based on direction that staff at the administration received at the February 20th work session. There has been some really good work, good and thoughtful work by staff and our consultant, BDS. And tonight, we are looking for input and comments from council. And then staff will further refine the context statements to incorporate that feedback. So I'd like to invite Sustainability Director David Fujimoto to come to the lectern and give the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Facilitate the discussion.
And council members. Thank you for that summary. To provide a little more context for the contextual statements, I just wanted to note that these are anticipated to be included in the city's draft strategic plan. And they're really designed to help situate the goals and objectives and performance measures, to help provide some context for the readers in plain language, so they have a better understanding for where some of that additional kind of specific details are coming from. It's not intended to be policy, and it is intended to be kind of factual in nature and mostly informative. So with that, what I'd like to do is I'd read through the different contextual statements and then ask for your feedback. So as you know, there are six different priority goal areas. And the first one that I'll read through is mobility. The goal is that getting around town is easier for people who live, work, and play here. And the statement is, "After many years of rapid growth, traffic has become a significant issue affecting many aspects of life in Issaquah. Residents are frustrated by congested traffic on major streets and the challenges of getting around town. Facing continued projected growth in and around Issaquah, a focus on mobility, whether on foot or by car, bike, bus, or future light rail is imperative. Issaquah must promptly plan and implement transportation system improvements to improve circulation and help residents and businesses carry out their daily lives." The next priority goal area is growth and development. And the goal there, the goal statement there is, "Growth is proactively managed, planned, and communicated in a responsible way that retains our strong sense of community and livability. Issaquah is both in an enviable and challenging position at the edge of the urban growth boundary. Our rapid growth is driven by the community's desirability, the economic prosperity of the region, and state policies. In the face of this growth, Issaquah has chosen to direct development to the valley floor to protect existing neighborhoods and our forested hillsides. As Issaquah continues to grow into a more urban place, the community must retain its character and provide more opportunities for jobs, entertainment, housing, and services to ensure that livability remains a hallmark of the community." Next is environmental stewardship, and the goal statement there is, "That environmental resources are proactively enhanced, protected, and stewarded." And the contextual statement is, "Issaquah is defined by its passion for, access to, and protection of the natural environment. Residents hold in high regard Issaquah's iconic natural setting and strong environmental values. Residents want to engage in protecting and improving the environment, as well as acquiring new lands for the public's benefit. Success will come from active stewardship by the community and its partners, coupled with thoughtful strategies, projects, and policies." Next is social and economic vitality. The goal statement there is, "An economically vital and diverse community is supported by robust businesses, affordable housing, and supportive services. Issaquah is well-known as a great place to live and a growing center for businesses. Residential growth has outpaced job creation, and rising costs make it hard for the people who work in Issaquah to afford housing in the community. Issaquah wants to increase the availability of jobs that provide the ability to live here, expand housing affordability, and provide access to the services residents need so that more people are able to live, work, and thrive in the community." The last two are infrastructure and city leadership and services. For infrastructure, the goal is that an infrastructure system that is planned, designed, built, and well-maintained supports current and future community needs. Issaquah's most critical services depend on infrastructure that is in good working order. For years, the community has relied on growth and development to fund expansion and upgrades to its streets, water and sewer systems, buildings, and parks. As the city's infrastructure begins to age, this approach is not sustainable. Ongoing maintenance, expansion, and replacement are all needed to ensure Issaquah can keep pace with its recent growth and planned future. Issaquah must implement a long-term infrastructure investment program to remain a desirable and vibrant city." And finally, city leadership and services. The goal here is, "Leadership and accountability in the delivery of public services for a growing and diversifying community. As Issaquah grows and its residents become more diverse, the city government itself must continue to evolve. The community will be best served by ensuring that its desire for engagement, diversity, and clear communication are well-integrated into city practices. In order to efficiently and effectively serve its residents, the city needs to invest in its internal systems and personnel. The city has an opportunity to create a more welcoming and connected community and a focus on continuous improvement of services for all."
Thank you, David. So because this was a request that came out of work session, I think what we're looking for tonight is some dialogue on the dais and about each of these individually, and then just kind of thumbs up, thumbs down. Let's move forward with it. So if we go back up your list, David, and we proceed through them the way -- contact statement. And as David said, I just want to remind everybody, these are the factual and informative statements that set the context, but they don't necessarily contain any of the policy that you've included in your goals and your objectives. So how would you like to proceed? That'd be Council President Batiste.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I guess I would just start with statements. As I was looking at the contextual statements, and I know we had a lot of discussion about this and how this was going to work, and strategic planning is never easy. But as I was going through, and especially for the three subcommittees that I sat on, looking for the key words, and when we were talking about the elevator pitches and how we would talk to community members about this, are those -- is that captured? Is that essence captured? And I felt like this was written in a way that really helped. As this goes out to the community, I think it does provide context. And I really was looking for those key words and found those within the three subcommittee areas that I had the opportunity to work on, which were mobility, environmental stewardship, and social and economic vitality.
Thank you. On mobility, are there any other comments that folks would like to make? Councilmember Ray.
So this might be as much a structural comment, but about midway through, there's a discussion on focus mobility. It says, "Whether on foot or by car, comma, bike, bus, or future light rail." I'm not quite sure how -- there seems to be an extra or, or are we -- how are we parsing that statement? It's just a little awkward to me.
Okay. We can -- I think that was designed for a certain readability, but we can certainly take a look at that.
Okay.
Discussion on mobility and the contextual statement for mobility. And it's fair to shake your head and say, "I'm fine. Let's move on." Okay. I'm seeing "move on." The next one, David, growth and development. Any specific thoughts on this particular contextual statement? Councilmember Hunt.
I think that in our conversations, we talked a lot about the Growth Management Act. And I think that putting that as part of the context here would allow people that want more information to just type that into their browser. And I did that, and the first thing that comes up is a definition. And I think that gives a lot of the context around the background for some of our challenges.
Thank you. Helpful.
Great.
Any other comments on this particular -- Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. So the one part I tripped over was the second sentence says, "Our rapid growth is driven by the community's desirability." And when I read that, it sounded to me like our community desires rapid growth.
Right.
And so something to the effect of, and we don't have to wordsmith here, the community being a desirable place to live or, you know, attracting.
Yes. That totally makes sense.
That makes sense. I think that was the intent.
Yes. Any other comments on that contextual statement? Seeing none, let's go to the next one, environmental stewardship. Any specific comments related to this statement? I am not seeing anything, although I am staring down Councilmember Ray, who is staring at the screen. Nothing? Okay. Social and economic vitality. Councilmember Ray.
This one is what I was staring at, Mayor.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
I was reading ahead. This is missing something to me. I have no problem with everything that's there, but I believe that one of the parts of social, or more importantly, economic vitality in this community, is having the services that this community needs in abundance that's proportionate to the size of the growth we've had in residential development. So I would like to see something in terms of the context of this, to talk about our robust businesses in more than just ones that provide a wage that meet the needs of -- or provide for people to live here, but also for robust businesses that provide the services of the people who live here.
Great.
So not just about business health, but about businesses that we need to have or encourage to have in town in order to be able to provide the full services.
Right. In my view, a robust community and a vital community provides a level of services to the people who live here and who live around us that is a level proportionate to the population. So as the population has grown fairly dramatically in the last several years, I do not believe that we can say that the level of services that are provided by businesses in this community has kept up with that.
I get -- yeah, I want to get some thoughts on that. Mariah.
So just a question for Councilmember Ray. As we were talking about social and economic vitality, and you had brought up that exact piece in terms of services, but we're also covering social services here. Are you adding some language that expands beyond sort of social services?
Yeah. So my desire, both in terms of this goal, and I would liken the language around the objective, is that we capture the notion that a robust business community is part and part -- is one part is to create jobs so people can live and work here. But the other part of that is to provide services for people who do live here. And in my opinion, and others I've talked to, we're currently at a level where we're not providing the same level of services, not social services, but commercial services. So, you know, restaurants, car washes, things like that, that are aligned to or consistent with the level of growth we've had in the last, say, five years.
So, oh, Council President Marts.
So I think I get Chris's point, and I really agree with it. And I have four words. Old-town grocery store.
Yeah.
And I think something that reflects those sorts of concerns in the language here. I also don't want to try to wordsmith tonight, but I think that's absolutely spot-on.
Okay. I'm just going to write those four words down for now. It's a great example. And then look to David and see, do you have -- have you heard enough? Because there's more that may want to comment on this, I know.
Yes, I think I've captured that comment. Understand businesses and kind of the two functions.
Making sense. Okay. Councilmember Walsh.
Along those ideas, while I completely agree with that, I feel like that's captured in the last sentence in the growth and development section. Says, "As Issaquah continues to grow into a more urban place, the community must retain its character and provide more opportunities for jobs, entertainment, housing, and services." So I would prefer expanding that idea so that it meets your goals rather than talking about it in a social and economic vitality area.
Thoughts? Because this is your working time right now. Thoughts on that suggestion? Councilmember Ray?
I'm just trying to figure out where --
Council President Batiste.
The last sentence in the opportunity section of growth and development.
That access services residents needs so that more people can afford to live, work, and thrive in the community. Has it been changed?
No.
Under growth and development is?
Thank you. Yes, that might well be a great statement, but it -- when I talk about economic vitality, I want to see something that talks about -- I want -- I'm just wanting to quote President Marts, "I'm just one of seven." But I would like to see growth and vitality speak to our business community and growing our business community specifically. So don't disagree with that, but I just would like to see it called out within this one. Thank you for pointing that out.
General agreement from everybody? I know Deputy Council Batiste wants to weigh in.
Well, I guess that was why I had asked the question originally, because I know we spoke about that, and I wasn't -- I was trying to remember back where we wanted that to land, where we wanted to capture that and where that would best fit. I think for me, as one of seven, if we -- as long as we capture both sides of services, I would be fine.
I'm hearing, I'm seeing general acceptance. Let's put something in there along the lines of what Councilmember Ray suggested, in more than four words. A few more words than four words. Okay.
Very good.
If there's no other comments, let's move on to the next one, infrastructure. Thoughts? Suggestions? All good? Councilmember Walsh? Councilmember Hunt?
I don't like the idea of saying, "The community has relied on growth and development to fund expansion." I think it speaks kind of negatively. I almost would say growth and development has enabled the expansion and upgrades. You know, I'd just like a little bit more of a positive spin on that area.
Council President Marts.
I think it is supposed to be a little negative, intentionally. I think that we have had, and this is -- and I'm harkening back to my campaign speech from 2009. You know, we have -- there's one model for growing cities, right? And there's a different model for sustainable cities. And as we turn that corner, we have to look at different funding mechanisms. And I actually respectfully prefer this language because it's a call to action for us to look at things differently as we turn that corner.
Thoughts? Councilmember Goodman? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Hunt, then Councilmember Goodman.
I had a similar reaction to Councilmember Walsh on this because I think that while it is a statement about having relied on growth and development to fund these things, I think the part that I responded to was that the singling out of the community has relied on these things. So I think if it were the city has relied, I think it's a -- to say that the community has relied on these things was what I was reacting to.
Interesting.
And so I would be okay with the statement if it was, "For years, we have relied on growth and development to fund a great deal of our upgrades," or "The city has relied on these things."
Okay. Councilmember Goodman, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I'm not sure that relied on is the right phrase. It's maybe looked to or assumed or some other --
Too strong of a language, perhaps?
Yeah. Because I don't think that we've sat back in the community or the city has relied on. I think we've kind of assumed that certain things were going to happen as a result of growth and development. I don't think that that's the case.
Okay.
David, are you getting sort of a clear picture of what the intent is, sir?
I believe so. Yes, thank you.
Back to Councilmember Hunt.
I have one other question, which is, when we saw this last time, it was core infrastructure. So will it be infrastructure going forward? That decision was made to just call it infrastructure. And then also related, I had a question about what was in that definition. So are we henceforth defining these streets, water, sewer system, buildings, and parks? That's what we're talking about with this section?
That's correct on both fronts. And so I think what we heard was that the core perhaps led us to a path which was presuming something other than something more broad. And so the -- and then the other piece was that we heard that we wanted to understand what specifically that included. So we articulated those things.
Good point. Thank you. Any other comments on this one? And we are moving on to city leadership and services. Comments or discussion? Or you can just put your thumb up and -- your thumbs up. Head nod. Anything else? Councilmember Hunt?
I had a thought on this one, which is about the last sentence, "The city has an opportunity to create a more welcoming and connected community." I think that there were earlier some sentences similar to this about creating the community. And I think it's really more, not to wordsmith, but the intent, I think, is more about supporting the community, which is a welcoming community.
Does that make sense, David?
Yes.
Okay. Other comments on this one? Good? Awesome. Thank you for your work. This was extra homework that you guys had from the work session, sir. Council President Marts.
I just want to say generally, thank you so much for putting this together. You know, I had been, I think, at the last meeting, a little publicly skeptical about whether this would introduce all sorts of strum and drong on council. And you guys did a great job, as evidenced by the fact that we got through this relatively quickly.
That you had a good conversation. That's right.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next steps will be that there'll be a presentation of the draft plan at the March 11th work session. And the community will be asked to review and provide input on the draft plan through a variety of engagement activities later this month. Is there any other questions, or we'll move on to the next item? Great. Thanks. This is now time for audience comments. Audience members may address their council and mayor this evening, and the guidelines for participation will be displayed on the screen. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you're here representing a group, please identify the group you're representing, and you can speak for five minutes. Those who signed up on the call, on the sign-in sheet, will be called up first. And if you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. And I guess, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Auntie Rosen.
So name and address would be great.
My name is Auntie Rosen, and I live at 680 Northwest Datewood Drive, Issaquah. My name is Auntie Rosen and I live at 680 Northwest Datewood Drive, Issaquah. Wow, okay. I'm just here to say thank you to the city council. No other good reason, but.
That's a good reason.
Okay. You guys probably don't get thanked enough. So, the first one is about the skate park. I have two college-age girls who do not skate. I don't plan on taking up the sport anytime soon, but you guys did a wonderful job putting that in. I live on Squawk Mountain, so I walk the dog down there a lot. And it is used all the time. You have little kids, you have big kids, you have teenagers. You put in benches, you have a porta potty, you have excellent parking. And obviously, you hit a part of the community that really needed a place to go. I don't know those people, but they seem really happy. And your investment in our community is well-used. I could not understand where it was, where it was going because it was so close to the street and there didn't seem to be a big enough piece of land. But you did a great job. And I know from years ago, it was contentious about having enough money to put it in, but I just want you to know that your investment in our community really made a big difference to those people that needed it. My last, really quick, I love Southeast 62nd, is that what it is? Bravo. I've been back on the trail. The road is beautiful, the traffic is great. I love the roundabout. I know it was a lot of hard work. You guys did a great job. And then the last thing is, excellent job with the snow. Your plowing, your people going through the town, we got around just fine and you put Bellevue to shame. So, great job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Auntie. Next, Tisha?
Dave Hitchens.
I'm here to pretty much agree with what the ad hoc committee has come up with for the financing.
Steve, I'm just going to get you to state your address for the record.
Sure. I'm Dave Hitchens at 990 Pickering Place, Issaquah, which is a road that, driveway that intersects Newport Way, right there near Maple. So, I've been watching this, I've been, I've lived there for over 21 years. And I'm sure that that area is probably needed, they probably had plans for Newport Way dating back decades before that because it really has changed, I would guess, changed very little for the past 40 years, maybe even 60 years. So, that's something that has been needed to be done for many years. They, you've had it in planning for a long time. And I was a little bit disappointed that you seemed to throw that into the same category as the westerly portion of Newport, which is really just a frontage road for 90, so that it doesn't really affect the transportation downtown Issaquah much at all. So, if all we can do right now is get that financing for the acquisition and design, then I guess that's what we have to do. But I would say you need to come up with some creative financing methods to get it done a lot faster than decades away because that's what it, almost what it indicated it might be, in increments over the next 20 years. So, it's important. I think you need to do it. It's inadequate for bicycling, walking, driving. It looks like the lane is basically 10-foot wide with like a two-foot shoulder. So, I would say you need a lot of, you need to do a lot more work than just to do this, approving this thing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
No one further has signed up to speak.
And I see Mr. Kapler standing up. I also forgot to mention this evening, if you are in the audience with us tonight and you hear something, you want to demonstrate that you have support for the speaker, please feel free to raise your hand while they're speaking. It lets the council know that you are in agreement with what the speaker is saying. Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Real quick on several topics. Tonight, the environment section you were looking at was very much how it looks and feels in Issaquah and didn't look beyond our borders at all. Salmon and climate were completely ignored. And I think those are important and it's, were part of a bunch bigger picture than just having Issaquah look nice. Sidewalks were a problem during the snow event and most people don't realize that they have a responsibility for that, including the city, which never once shoveled the sidewalk on East Sunset in front of this building. They did a little bit over there and they did a police station, but we got a ways to go. And I think we need to be notifying residents that they have a responsibility to do their own sidewalks. And I think we could really push on that. I would suggest something included in water bills since the water bill goes to often the owners of the property rather than the renters. And it's their responsibility, not necessarily the renters. Great work done by our Park Department on the East Sunset potential expansion of the trailhead and making our trail up to, potential trail up, new trail up to Tradition Plateau being legal on our property or DNR property and having much more, better grade. We've ignored that for a long time because we were always trespassing when we were doing improvements. And we can now come hopefully with that agreement with a much improved situation. Arch is part of your work plan agenda that's going on. One of the things in the news has been about arch and affordability. And it's mentioned in your work plan is making sure that you're monitoring affordability for ownership and rental. And I think that's something we need to improve on big time. Small cell issue, it's going back to committee, thank you. There's two issues with that. Well, the main issue is how we notify people. And 300 feet is a huge notification for something that happens on a power pole. But it is essential that no matter what happens on that pole, the people immediately in that area in view need to know about it. So, please look at how we give notice on that and think about how we can reduce the impacts on views and the rest with those small cell sites. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else that would like to address their council this evening? Mary.
Thanks, Mary. My name is Mary Lynch and I reside at 2690 Northwest Oak Crest Drive, Issaquah, Washington. I just want to again reiterate that I do really appreciate what was done during the snowstorm and the support that the city had. Would also say ditto to what David said about sidewalks. We need more attention to those and also need to work more closely with the school district to get the sidewalks to the schools. Because we restarted schools and the kids could not get, walk on the sidewalks to any of the five schools within the city. They were not cleared and the school district didn't do any jobs clearing the schools. And so, it was very dangerous for them to walk. That being said, I want to talk about the transportation funding and just was able to get that briefly. And I apologize if there's any mistakes in this PowerPoint because I just got the information today and was reviewing it. One of my concerns is the funding sources. I didn't see anything in this that talked about developers' fees or transportation impacts. And a year or so ago, I asked and found out that the Development Services and Public Works, when we're looking at projects and funding of that and what development fees are impacted, that they're not fully burdened. And I really think that our developers and their assessments and fees need to be 100% and also make sure that the time and work that we included is fully burdened work and labor hours. And what I was told it wasn't. So, those are points there. Also, want to talk about the Newport Way from S-900 to the west of the city limits. This project has been identified for over 30 years and identified with each new development that happened along there that it was needed in order to meet concurrency. This is 30 years ago. It's been in the capital plan, not funded. All new development along this road, the 2.5, as I said, the concurrency was based upon a three-lane road all the way to the city limits. We don't have a three-lane road. We need to move forward with the Newport Way Improvement Project. And I thank the city for funding the conceptual work that was done and working, and all the neighbors that spent time working with KPG. My concern is, we finally in late October saw what the city's approved to happen at Oak Crest and Newport Way, and it is not what the study said. The sightline triangles that the city has approved on what is to be done currently are not what KPG told us. Actually, when we had the study, we were all agreed that there shouldn't even be a crosswalk at Newport Way, that it needs to go down to the trailhead. But, let me go through. So, I've sent this to you. These pictures. But this was the layout of Newport Way with then also the upper there at the park and the crosswalk that was being moved to the park.
Thank you, Mary. If you want to summarize, that would be great.
Well, I would just say that going forward, I would hope that the RIVA project with Oak Crest is based upon the work that with the city, KPG approved, and the citizens, not what the city staff has approved with RIVA because it's not safe. And if you'll read through my presentation, it talks about why it's not safe.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Mary. New Mary.
My name is Mary Hammerly. I live at 1230 Oakwood Place Northwest, which is right off Newport Way. I've lived in my current home for almost 20 years. And to say that those of us that live on the west portion of Newport Way just uses a thoroughfare to get to other places is far from the truth. I have an office that's right off of Exit 17. I live right off of Exit 15. I am using the roads, Newport Way specifically, to get myself to downtown Issaquah every day of the week, sometimes multiple times. And I am not alone. The difficulty I see in the plan in terms of planning when the Newport Way improvements are going to be made is there is a suggestion that the city will have up to 40 years to make those improvements. The west side of Newport Way is dealing with huge numbers of new development, a lot of new people moving in potentially with new development. We have a crazy traffic circle that eventually got finished. And beyond that, nothing has been done to deal with the large numbers of traffic that are beginning to appear as these new developments begin to be occupied. It can't be put down on the low priority on the plans for transportation that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else who would like to address council? Hi, Steve.
Hi, good evening, mayor, council. Been a while since I talked to you all, so good to see you all. Lindsay, thanks. Welcome to the city council. Thanks for serving. So, a couple shout-outs and I'll just be brief. First of all, again, thanks to the city Public Works Department, both for the windstorm that we had last year cleanup and for the snow removal cleanup that we had. That was a big ask. So, thanks to all for those things. Definitely worth, is worth considering. In the past, there have been proposals to reduce city or present, city presentations or president, president's body to three minutes. This is, as I talked, this is an example why we should not limit three minutes. I know a lot of times I've spent many late nights with you here before council. It's not just three minutes, five minutes, it's all the time you have to get here. I don't have as much time to commit to come to as many meetings, so I need to build two more minutes worth of stuff in. So, please don't reduce those times. I think what you're saying to a lot of people is their time is invaluable, it's not worth consideration. You're putting out a message that says just that, your input isn't of value. AB 7714, there were a couple policy statements that should this and should that. The questions are, yes, that deserves more consideration for both the public impact. AB 7721, archwork programs, I support that. Cemetery fees, AB 7723, if it needs increase, it needs increasing. I just also think it's a chance to shout out for the local business of Flint Topps doing a good job and the services that they provide, so wanted to shout out for them. AB 7739, trailhead 20, or milepost 20, I think that is worth consideration. And I guess lastly, the transportation capital project funding, several thoughts stood out for me on this. One was, I'd like to see the biking piece of the Lake Smosh part included in moving forward as consideration. For Newport, part of what I read, and I may have misunderstood this, there was the idea that the city has funded a lot of funds for development work that may or may not get approved or reimbursed by the state if that isn't approved or right of way isn't approved. And I guess I don't understand how we're approving city funds in advance, where we don't understand what the cost is and risk losing cost or fair structure. If people want to pay for things to make them happen, they should be doing just that. I don't think we should be forwarding the money and having the risk of understanding what the full costs are. That said, that seems like the most likely road transportation project. It just seems like we're not understanding the cost before we're having all this pay structure that goes with it. Thank you all. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Come on up, Kathy.
Kathy McCory, 155 East Gimlin Boulevard. I'm the CEO for the Chamber of Commerce. Since you mentioned raising hands after Auntie's comments, huh huh, just echoing her comments, her enthusiasm, and her praise. Great job. And I just need to make a quick announcement for everyone. The chamber has been working on a new project and we'd just like to take a moment to fill you in. It is a regional business summit that will be held on April 25th. And the chamber, in association with the City of Issaquah's Economic Development Department and in cooperation with Snow Valley, Sumamish, Newcastle, and Mercer Island Chambers, will be hosting a one-day event to bring together experts to inform and engage business owners, managers, and CEOs on a range of issues concerning and impacting our region. Our goal is that they take away information, tools, and solutions to support business growth. Some of the topics will include hiring, retention, taxes, affordable housing, traffic, cybersecurity, and social media. And I would like to just let a little bit more out of the bag here. We have just confirmed our keynote speaker is Courtney Gregoire. And just a little about Courtney, she is the commissioner for the Port Commission. She was elected to that in 2013 and re-elected in 15. Her priorities include growing our region economy, expanding international trade and tourism, and protecting our shared natural environment. She has a longstanding commitment of helping communities generate broadly shared prosperity. In addition to her duties as chair at the Port Commission, Courtney works as Assistant General Counsel for Microsoft's Digital Crimes Unit. Courtney has also worked in Washington DC in senior-level management positions for both the legislative and executive branches of government. From 2009 to 2012, Courtney served as Director of National Export Initiative for President Obama and Deputy Chief of Staff for the US Department of Commerce. And so, we're pleased to have her as the keynote speaker for the Regional Business Summit, April 25th, 9:30 to 3:00, at the Club Snoqualmie Ridge. And registration is now available and I have flyers I will leave. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? Come on up.
Hello, thank you. Kevin Wolfe, 4453 190th Ave., Southeast. Just wanted to express my desire to push through the procurement of land for the bike lane off of West Lake Sumamish. There, I believe, was an accident with a cyclist today, which underscores the importance of it. There's a great trail all the way from North Bend to Seattle, except for right there. So, anything we could do to move that forward, I'm a lot in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? Seeing none, I just wanted to say thank you to all of those who took the time tonight to come and address the council. We heard about transportation funding discussion that the council will be having later this evening. And I wanted to address that one briefly. So, tonight, I specified that there was three minutes for individuals to comment or provide audience comments, or five minutes for a group. If that was misunderstood to mean that the council is desiring to have less engagement, I'll take full responsibility for that because that is not the case. The council agrees, the council receives their input in many ways besides the audience comments that come tonight. This is the version that shows up on tape. But they receive a significant number of emails, phone calls. There are survey results, there's social media, and they're now getting a weekly report on community events and outreach opportunities and other ways to look at community feedback. They are very, very interested and engaged in getting feedback. And so, there is no intention to turn a corner and say, "We're now deciding not to listen to our community." That is not the intent, and that is not what's going on. So, I apologize if that is how the information's being received. Actually, I have to ask for audience comments two more times or I'm not doing it official. Is there anyone else who would like to do audience comments? And last call for audience comments. Thank you. Audience comments are closed, and we will move to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Walsh.
No report at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The King Conservation District Advisory Committee met on February 20th. This was part of an ongoing discussion about the messaging around a proposal they have to increase their per parcel rate, which is how they fund the work that the King Conservation District does, and the advisory committee is helping advise them on how that messaging will work. And they are also going to be presenting at a pre-PIC meeting on March 13th. So, Council President Tola Martz will, as a member of the PIC, would be at that meeting, and I will be there as a member of the advisory committee. The Cascade Water Alliance Board met on February 27th. We heard a presentation by Texas A&amp;M on affordability of water services, which had some information specific to Issaquah, which was very interesting. And then, we also heard about options for Cascade's 2019 bond issue, and also a option for giving homeless shelters relief from RCFC assessments. So, this is the regional capital facilities charge, and in that discussion, we talked about how we may need a broader discussion about RCFCs in general and how they're charged. They're currently charged on the basis of a meter, and there's a few options, and so there may be a bigger discussion around making that, giving different options for that. And the next meeting of the Cascade Water Alliance Board is March 27th at the Cascade offices in Bellevue. And then, there was also a meeting related to water but organized by Lloyd Warren of Sumamish Plateau Water to discuss wastewater. And this was February 28th, and the main reason for this meeting was about the need for wastewater service providers in King County to have a voice and a vote in issues around wastewater service. And this will also be coming forward to a PIC meeting at some currently undefined meeting. But again, as the representative at the PIC, that would be a meeting that Council President Martz would hear more information about that issue. And then, for land and shore, we have an upcoming meeting this Thursday, March 7th, at 6:30. We have two items on the agenda. The first one is AB 7682, Proposed Amendments, 2018 Comprehensive Plan, Central Issaquah Plan, IMC and Central Standards, and AB 7683, Amendments to IMC 18.07.480, Community Facilities Standards Regarding Public Buildings. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The next meeting of the Services and Safety Committee will be on March 12th at 6:30 here in council chambers. We have carried over Agenda Bill 7723, Cemetery Fee Increases, amending IMC 2.20.040. Other likely agenda items include Agenda Bill 7721, the 2019 Archwork Program and Budget, Agenda Bill 7739, Amendments to Enter Local Agreement with the Department of Natural Resources for Maintenance and Use of the High Point Trailhead Regarding Property Acquisition and Maintenance Fees, and Agenda Bill 7740, Puget Sound Energy Recreational Use Agreement and Permit for Limited Use of Operating Property Permits. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Council Infrastructure Committee met on February 21st here in council chambers. The one item on the agenda was Agenda Bill 7714, amending Issaquah Municipal Code 18.22, Wireless Communication Facilities and Related Fees. This has to do with changing our city code to align with new FCC regulations regarding the permitting, fees, siting, and design of wireless communication equipment. Less than a year ago, we changed this part of our code in a way that looked out after our best interest and established our local control over what the wireless industry can do within our city. However, the new FCC regulations trump local control and give the industry what they were seeking, which is very minimal regulatory environment. After making some changes, including in the areas of fees and public notifications, the committee recommended sending the bill back to the full council for adoption tonight. However, right at the very end of the meeting, some discussion about public notification indicated that maybe we didn't get that last part right. So, staff asked me as chair, and I concur, that the proper next step was to keep this in committee so that we can nail down this last issue. So, on the consent agenda tonight, should it be adopted, instead of finalizing the changes to the IMC, the action is to send it back to the Council Infrastructure Committee's March meeting, which is scheduled for Thursday, March 18th. At this moment, that is the only item on the agenda for that meeting, other than the standard project status report update. And then, the Growth Management Policy Board, which is part of the Puget Sound Regional Council, our next meeting is this Thursday, March 7th, at 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at PSRC headquarters in Seattle. Agenda, everything relates to the update to the four county regions' vision for what development and growth will look like in the year 2050. This is known as Vision 2050. So, on the agenda, they will be issuing the draft supplemental environmental impact statement, so we'll be receiving that. And then, we'll be having discussions about the environmental section of vision, the department, excuse me, the development patterns section, and the section on economy and jobs, which will be followed by a breakout session to dive into more detail. So, that's the agenda for Thursday, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, of which I'm chair this year, has not yet met, but on the consent agenda tonight is Agenda Bill 7711 with recommended appointments for the other four members of the committee. And assuming that the consent agenda passes as proposed, then the committee will set its first meeting for the year. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors meets on March 14th at 4:00 p.m. at headquarters on Newport Way, and the agenda has not yet been set. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein, would you like to add to your report?
Yes, actually, I want to amend something that I said. I had a little test in there to see if anybody was listening. I'm kidding. I actually misreported. The infrastructure meeting is on the 21st of March, not the 18th. So, David, don't show up on the 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It'd be Council President Patisse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report this evening.
Thank you. Council President Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, March 13th at 7:00 p.m. in Renton City Hall. We did not have a February meeting, so it is, our agenda is jam-packed, and SCA's longstanding ability to get done in two minutes, or two hours, sorry, will be sorely tested. We have a couple discussion items on Challenge Seattle Middle Income Housing Initiative, also on Initiative 976. We have updates on regional transportation planning and homeless response system, and King County Parks levy renewal, and King County Charter Review Commission, and 2019 State Legislature Session and Solid Waste Comprehensive Plan, and levies and ballot, well, we always do levies and ballot measures in King County. We have a couple of informational items on Responsible Recycling Task Force Recommendations, as well as an informational item on Vision 2050, which I will mention again in my GMPC update. At the March 13th pre-PIC workshop, as Councilmember Hunt mentioned, King Conservation District staff will present their proposed program of work for 2020 to 2025, which includes a proposed potential rate increase of approximately $3 per parcel. And I will mention that that is open to anyone, but particularly, you know, we could have all eight of us on the dais there if we wanted. We just couldn't, you know, we couldn't plan any Issaquah policy, but the pre-PIC meetings are open to everyone. King County Growth Management Policy Council met on Wednesday, February 27th at 4:00 p.m. in PSRC chambers. We discussed two items. The first was on the GMPC Affordable Housing Committee. It was a presentation on the formation of that committee, the draft language associated with it. I would say that there was nothing potentially controversial about that. Geographic equity was discussed, making sure that SCA would have some ability to recommend. It will wind up, appointments to that committee will wind up looking a lot like SCA appointments to other committees, even though Executive Constantine will actually do the approving of who's in that committee. And then, we discussed Vision 2050, Draft Supplemental Environmental Impact Statement, which you heard about already from Councilmember Winterstein, and basically, they were just telling us about all the hard work you guys are doing and that we will eventually get to hear our bit of it when the time comes. So, kudos to all your hard work. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Martz. So, on to the mayor's report. There will not be an executive session held this evening. I wanted to restate a statement of support that the city council and the mayor put out last week regarding Sumamish. The City of Issaquah is sending its support to the Sumamish community and its council. Sumamish has recently experienced incidents of hate crimes that include spray painting of hateful racist graffiti on several homes in the Clahani neighborhood. I and the Issaquah City Council have voiced our strong commitment to being an equitable, welcoming, and safe place for all. We know our neighbors to the north feel the same way. We're standing tall with you, Sumamish, as you show that any behavior to the contrary does not have a place in our community. I traveled to Olympia last Friday to join the mayor of Toquilla and the city council president of Kent in testifying in support of Senate Bill 5862. This proposed bill would continue the streamlined sales tax mitigation payments to cities that lost revenues when the sales tax shifted in 2007 from the originating location of a good to the destination location of the consumer. The bill would extend these payments, which are currently scheduled to end in October 2019, through to July 2030. The bill passed out of committee after the testimony and is now waiting to be brought up for a vote on the Senate floor. I also had a chance to briefly meet with all six members of the legislature who represent Issaquah to highlight the city's legislative priorities and thank them for their ongoing support. Following the snow events last month, the Public Works Operations Team is now working to clean the streets of sand. Please be patient as our crews work to clean all streets. These cleanup operations will take six to eight weeks, as it takes several passes with a sweeper to pick up most of the sand. There will be another Coffee with the Mayor event on Saturday from 9:00 till 10:30 a.m. March 9th at Yummy Yogurt on Front Street. These are informal sessions where you can come and drop by and chat with the mayor and ask questions and meet some of your neighbors, and I look forward to engaging with the community members for this open dialogue. There are CERT classes starting on March 6th. The purpose of the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT training, is to provide individuals with the basic skills that they will need to respond to their community's immediate needs in the aftermath of a disaster when emergency services are not immediately available. By working together, CERT members can assist in saving lives and protecting property using the basic techniques of the course. The target audience for this course is individuals who desire the skills and knowledge required to prepare for and respond to a disaster. Spring classes will be held evenings from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. in the training room at the Issaquah Public Works Operation Building. The course has a $35 fee and includes a CERT backpack and vest, a hard hat, and basic medical supply kit. To register or learn more, visit issaquacitizencore.org. And I do have to brag a little bit because Issaquah has currently got over 600 residents that are trained to respond in an emergency and assist our professional emergency responders, and that is a really high number for a city of our size, so we should all be very proud of that. On January 26th, I held a How to Run for Office workshop here in Issaquah that was well-attended. King County is also holding additional workshops to help people who are interested in running for office. Their workshops will discuss offices up for election, how to become a candidate, filing fees, basic campaign finance information, campaign signs, candidate statements for the voter's pamphlet. The upcoming workshops are Tuesday, March 5th in Sumamish, Wednesday, March 13th in Shoreline, Monday, March 25th in Auburn, Monday, April 1st in Redmond, and Saturday, April 6th and 20th in Renton. So, for more details and information, please visit kingcounty.gov/elections. I'd also like to do a call for nominations for the city's Ruth Keys Award. This award is for nominating outstanding citizens for the Ruth Keys, to nominate outstanding citizens for the Ruth Keys Environmental Award, our community's highest honor for environmental advocates, and the Community Environmental Award. Keys' namesake award honors the legacy of a grassroots activist who, for more than four decades, advocated for the preservation of landmarks and natural areas, sustainable development, recycling programs, and the protection of the Issaquah Valley Aquifer and Tiger Mountain. The award recognizes the efforts of exemplary individuals for environmental excellence and demonstrating enduring vision, dedication, and lasting effects. Building upon the legacy of the Keys Award, the Community Environmental Award recognizes outstanding achievements by individuals, groups, or organizations. These achievements are noteworthy in their impact and benefit to the community, while also smaller in scale or vision, or shorter in duration, or more localized in impact. The nomination deadline for these is 5:00 p.m. March 8th, and more information and the nomination form can be found on our website at issaquawat.gov. Proceeding to the consent calendar, the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved with one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and bring it down to regular business? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the consent calendar as listed in this evening's published agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is under regular business. AB 7750, Transportation Capital Project Funding Recommendations. This is coming out of the Ad Hoc Long-Term Finance Committee, whose members are the city administrator, finance director, and council president Martz, and council members Ray and Winterstein. I'd like to invite Finance Director Beth Goldberg to make a presentation. Thank you, Beth.
Sorry. That was kind of a strange introduction. Don't mind me as I destroy the microphone. Okay. Sorry about that. I think we are ready to go. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I am here tonight to provide you all with an overview of the ad hoc finance committee's deliberations and recommendations over the unfunded transportation capital list. There is a detailed agenda bill in your packets. I'm not going to go into that level of detail this evening, and I'm going to focus on the highlights, but would refer you to your packets for additional information, and certainly, if you have questions, don't be shy. And also, I should add that in the, we're going to take a little bit of a pause in the middle of this, and I'm going to invite Sheldon Lynn up to give a little bit of background and some updated information on a couple of the projects on the unfunded transportation capital list for your benefit. So, first, I want to focus on what we are going to discuss tonight. First, I'm going to provide some background on how we got to this point. I'm going to provide an overview of the revenue recommendations that the ad hoc finance committee is making to the full council, also an overview on the recommended project list to fit within those revenues. level of detail this evening, and I'm going to focus on the highlights, but would refer you to your packets for additional information, and certainly if you have questions, don't be shy. So, and also I should add that in the, we're going to take a little bit of a pause in the middle of this, and I'm going to invite Sheldon Lynn up to give a little bit of background and some updated information on a couple of the projects on the unfunded transportation capital list for your benefit. So first, I want to focus on what we are going to discuss tonight. First, I'm going to provide some background on how we got to this point. I'm going to provide an overview of the revenue recommendations that the Ad Hoc Finance Committee is making to the full council, also an overview on the recommended project list to fit within those revenues, and then last, there will be time for council discussion about next steps and hopefully some direction back to us as staff about how the full council wishes to proceed. So first, for the background of how we got here, just a reminder that the, the topic of the unfunded transportation capital projects came up during council's financial retreat last August, and it was during that session that there was direction to the Ad Hoc Finance Committee and the administration to develop revenue options to support the unfunded transportation capital priorities. And then, again, during the deliberations, council deliberations over the 2019 budget, there was direction given to the Ad Hoc Finance Committee to meet in the first quarter and report back. So, that is where we are now. The Ad Hoc Finance Committee did meet twice, January 16 and February 13, and the goal for tonight is to provide you with an overview of their recommendations, and again, an opportunity for council to provide information about desired next steps. So first, as a reminder, I want to briefly highlight what is on this so-called unfunded transportation capital list. Some of the dollar amounts on this list have changed since you've last seen them. As you all know, capital projects, the costing of them can be dynamic and fluid. Also, there've been some, there's one project on here that I'll get to that reflects a recommended change in priorities from the Ad Hoc Finance Committee. So briefly, and actually before I also say anymore about this, I'm showing costs by year because these had been the planning numbers, but I will also say that, given the timing of this discussion that, and the timing of when, if council wishes to implement the revenue options, the timing of these expenditures might get pushed out. So, this is, this is simply for example and planning sake at this point, but this is subject to change. So, the projects on the list, as you, I believe, are all aware, are Southeast 43rd, Newport Way from 54th to State Route 900, the Central Park Signal, Newport Way, Maple to Sunset, Northwest Samamish Road, also known as the pinch point. This is where the Ad Hoc Finance Committee is recommending an expansion of this project, reflected in the costs in 2022 of 9.4 million. Sheldon will speak about this more during his comments. Northwest Gilman Concept Development, and then 12th SR 900 intersection. I will also note that this, these are only the unfunded transportation needs, and these are only the unfunded costs on these projects. In addition to the transportation needs, the council has identified in other settings parks funding needs, as well as city facility needs. Those costs are not captured here, and that, that's a topic that will be discussed in, in other venues. So, we're just focusing on those transportation priorities here. So, as the council deliberated the $113.6 million costs of that list that I just described, contemplated a scenario where you're financing these with 10-year bonds and a scenario where you're financing them with 20-year bonds. And the committee is recommending that these projects be financed with 20-year bonds for two primary reasons. First, as demonstrated on this chart here, if we were to proceed with the full $113 million package, using 10-year bonds, the annual debt service payments would be $14.6 million. And just to give you a little bit of context of what that means, currently, our annual debt service costs for non-voted debt in the general fund is 2.2 million, so a fairly significant increase, and just did not feel like that was, that was feasible. So, started looking at 20-year bonds. The annual debt service on 113.6 million is 9.2 million. That still feels out of reach and too much for the city to take on, and I'll explain a little bit more, some of the revenue parameters curtail this, but I wanted, before we start talking, to explain why we're going the 20-year bond route rather than the 10-year bond route. Another variable in influencing this decision is these are long-term capital investments that will yield benefits out towards 20 years. So, this is a way of spreading the costs not only to current taxpayers who will be benefiting from the investment, but also future taxpayers who will be benefiting. So, the question is, once you've settled on, or the recommendation of 20-year bonds, how do you pay for the debt service on those bonds? And as the committee was contemplating these recommendations and these options, it was, it was trying to be mindful of the fact that, that transportation is only a segment of the needs. We have a number of revenue tools at our disposal, but some of them are more flexible than others. So, for example, property tax could be used for transportation investments, but it can also be used for parks investments. It could be used for other city facility investments. So, that's, that's a revenue source that could be flexible. So, one choice is you could dedicate that towards transportation, but it might be limiting your options for these other needs. On the other hand, the Transportation Benefit District is solely dedicated to transportation. So, you can't, you can't exercise those revenue options and use them for something else. So, as the committee contemplated the options, it first looked at something that we're calling existing debt service capacity, and I'm going to go into more of these in detail, looked at existing debt service capacity, and the ones that are highlighted, or that with the asterisks are the ones that the committee is recommending, looked at Transportation Benefit District revenues, and then also the property tax. As I said, ruled out the property tax because of its, of its flexibility. I'll also note that the committee is not recommending using general fund fund balance for a couple of reasons. First of all, we're analyzing our financial position. We're not sure about the flexibility with that funding source, and also it is a flexible funding source, so it could be used for other needs, not just transportation. And then lastly, using that is not sharing the cost with future taxpayers. So, now I'm going to go through each one of these revenues and explain a little bit more about the amounts available to us from these revenues, and then why the committee is, or what the committee is recommending. So, first of all, with existing debt service capacity, the city, as I mentioned earlier, currently budgets about $2.2 million for debt service on existing outstanding debt. As you will see from the chart on the slide here, we will be retiring debt over the next couple of years. So, in 2020, our debt service payments will drop by about $600,000. In 2022, they'll drop by another $663,000, and then by 2028, all of our existing debt will be retired. So, if you leverage that $2.2 million that becomes available in increments between now and 2028, and the council were to make a decision, okay, we're going to dedicate that, that funding back towards future debt issuances, the, the city would be able to finance about 22, I'm sorry, $21 million worth of projects using 20-year financing. So, basically, that gives us $21 million to spend on transportation projects or other, or other capital needs. The committee is recommending dedicating $14 million of this $21 million towards the transportation projects. The committee is also recommending that $7 million of this capacity be reserved for parks acquisition and development costs. These costs were also identified, I believe, last August. It predated my time, but I believe that was the juncture that these costs were identified for, as a parks need, starting in 2020. And so, the committee decided, okay, let's allocate $7 million of the $21 million towards parks, and also recommended that at some point, the council have a separate discussion on overall parks funding, not just the acquisitions and development, but also the cost to implement the strategic plan. So, that's, that's how the 21 becomes 14 in this scenario. So, the Transportation Benefit District revenues, as a reminder, the council last January, January of 2018, implemented or adopted a Transportation Benefit District for the city of Issaquah. In adopting that Transportation Benefit District, the council has the ability to, to implement revenues or collect revenues that would, it would not be available to the city had a Transportation Benefit District not be, not be adopted. So, Transportation Benefit Districts do exist around the state of Washington, and they do afford a number of revenue tools to the jurisdictions. The two most common revenue tools and frequently implemented revenue tools are sales tax, a 0.2% increase in the sales tax, and vehicle license fee, which can start at $20 per vehicle and then gradually ramp up, following a number of rules outlined in RCW. A 0.2% sales tax increase, if the council were to decide to pursue this, does require voter approval, simple majority of the voters. So, the first step would be the council would have to make a decision that they would want to put this on the ballot, and then it would require a majority approval by the voters to be implemented. This revenue, conservatively, is estimated to bring in about $2 million per year. I know there are some questions about how this was estimated and why we're calling this conservative. So, first of all, first and foremost, sales tax is a volatile revenue source, so the desire in being conservative is not to be overly aggressive on the assumptions, because if it's linked to debt and the sales tax doesn't come in, the city's still obligated to pay that. So, this $2 million was calculated based on 2017 actual activity. We know sales tax activity has increased in subsequent years, so there could be some upward pressure on this, but we also know, if you follow what the economic prognosticators are saying, we are likely heading for a downturn in the next year or so. So, $2 million felt like a conservative number. In this analysis, for planning purposes only, we're assuming that that's a flat $2 million, so we're not assuming that there's some growth in there. That's another place where there could be some flex in these numbers, but again, there was a desire to approach this from a conservative perspective, especially knowing that this is a volatile revenue source. This sales tax, if approved by the voters, would be in place so long as the city has outstanding debt on the books related to, related to this revenue source. So, the committee is recommending utilizing a sales tax to, to finance some of our transportation capital needs. If you assume 20-year bonds, it would support $26 million in project costs. The committee's rationale for supporting the sales tax, as opposed to the VLF, which the committee is not recommending, is that as a regional retail hub, and people who are using our retail facilities, not just residents, but from outside the area that are using our roads, all of those parties would be contributing through the sales tax. So, it's a way of spreading the costs more equitably across all users of the road, not just, not just Issaquah residents. So, that had some appeal to the committee, and I'm sure that some of you may want to weigh in on this when I'm, I'm done presenting, but I, I believe I'm capturing some of the sentiments. The committee is not recommending the VLF because there was a sense that, that this is a regressive tax and that it's not tied to the value of the vehicle. It's just, if you drive a clunker, it's $20, and if you drive a Tesla, it's $20. So, the, the fact that it's not tied to vehicle value was a concern to the committee members. And again, this is not a way of spreading the costs across all the users of our roads. So, to briefly summarize what the, the two preferred financing strategies will get us in terms of project costs, if you add up the $14 million available from the existing debt service capacity and the $26 million from the sales tax, that would give the city conservatively $40 million to spend on transportation capital priorities over 20-year, 20-year financing. So, this leaves, as you see here, a pretty big gap compared to the $113 million. And I just want to provide a little bit of context of why, then, the committee didn't choose, for example, to levy the property tax to close this gap. If the, if the city were to implement, or to utilize existing debt service capacity, implement the sales tax, and implement the VLF, which the committee is not recommending, you would still be short and would have to increase property taxes, depending on how you calculate the numbers, between 30%, 30% and 50% above the current property tax rates. The committee did not feel like that was going to be well-received by the community. So, based on that analysis, started looking at, okay, how can we scale the project investments to meet the $40 million worth of revenues that the committee decided it was comfortable recommending to the full council? So, to do this, and I'm going to give a brief overview here, and then I'm going to turn this over to Sheldon to give some more information. To do this, the committee looked at scaling the scope of the unfunded transportation capital priority list, and the main strategy was to fund the two Newport projects through right-of-way acquisition only, and to put the construction costs out to a future time period. It's not uncommon for the city to break up capital investments and do design and right-of-way acquisition in one phase, and then at a later date, come back to the construction. And there are a variety of other reasons that Sheldon will go into, but in doing this, you reduce the unfunded capital needs, transportation capital needs, to $38.8 million, which fits within the $40 million worth of revenues that the Ad Hoc Committee is recommending to the full council. And with that, I will turn it over to Sheldon to explain a little bit more background on a couple of the projects.
Thank you, Beth. I'm Sheldon Lynn, Director of Public Works Engineering. As Beth mentioned, I'm going to talk a little bit about the three projects that have unique influences from outside agencies, and I'll talk a little bit more information that was presented at the committee, which helped inform their discussion, as well as their final recommendations regarding the three projects. The three projects I'm going to speak to are the two Newport Way projects, SR 900 to Southeast 54th, and Maple to Sunset, and then the Northwest Samamish Road Pinch Point project. I'll begin with the Newport Way projects. The two projects that we're talking about are located, as shown here, inside the city. The SR 900 to Southeast 54th is west of SR 900, shown in yellow, and the Maple to Sunset project, which is shown in blue, which extends from Maple down to West Sunset Way. The two Newport Way projects, currently, those projects have had council action approving design concepts for both of those corridors. In addition to that, SR 900 and Southeast, excuse me, Newport Way from 900 to Southeast 54th has been under design, as has the Maple to Sunset project. However, the SR 900 to Southeast 54th project has recently undergone a value engineering study. Within that study, there are recommendations that could result in some estimated cost reductions pending the implementation of some of the design changes that are recommended, but are still under consideration by the administration. In the latter part of the second quarter of this year, the administration anticipates coming to the city council to inform a bit more detail about what that value engineering study recommended and what it sees as possible implementation strategies in there to reduce that cost. Collectively, the two Newport Way projects have received approximately $3.3 million in federal funding for the design work that's been going on since 2017. The administration expects to receive in 2019 and '20 approximately another $5.1 million collectively between the two projects to go towards the right-of-way acquisition. collectively between the two projects to go towards the right-of-way acquisition. In 2018, in June, the Federal Highway Administration, FHWA, promulgated a ruling, and that ruling requires repayment of any federal funds used for design if the agency hasn't substantially completed the right-of-way acquisition phase within 10 years of the original money being made available for design. That means that if the city doesn't move forward with right-of-way acquisition by roughly 2026, 2027, 2028, it would be required to pay back the money that's been used, the federal money that's been used, on these two projects. Following up on that, further research was done into the Code of Federal Regulations, the CFRs, to see what sort of requirements might come about if there was federal money used in the right-of-way acquisition phase. The CFRs actually state that it's a requirement that if federal money is used within the right-of-way phase, that the agency would have 20 years to move forward with construction. The CFRs, however, do not stipulate a repayment requirement. That being said, the FHWA could still promulgate a rule, such as they did for the design work, that repayment may be required. That has not occurred yet, but there's some risk in that if, within that 20-year period, the city doesn't move forward with construction. So, factors that influenced the committee are preservation of federal funding, the ability to completely fund the projects through construction at this time, as Beth has spoken about, the ability to service the debt, grant agency relations when going for future grants, as well as avoidance of sunk costs. The committee's recommendation on these two projects was to fund the design and right-of-way acquisition phases, and then following up with, you know, trying to get money for construction over the coming years after that's completed. The Northwest Semamish Road Pinch Point. A little background on this one, and I'll have more slides that talk a little bit more graphically about this, but there's a section along Northwest Semamish Road that is affected by steep topography on the immediate north side, as well as narrow right-of-way and ability to go to the south, as it's confined by the Interstate 90. Having seen this, the city requested WashDOT to include in its auxiliary lane project a retaining wall, excavation work to create more available right-of-way for the city to expand southerly, rather than expanding into the homes to the north, and also to grant the right-of-way from the limited access of I-90 to the city of Issaquah. WashDOT did agree to that, with the condition that it had the budget to do so within its connecting Washington project. WashDOT is a place, if you recall the January 29th COW meeting, WashDOT presented that it is now at a place getting ready to advertise for construction bids. The engineer's estimate for the retaining wall was an additional $6 million approximately to the cost of the project in and of itself. There were also uncertainties that WashDOT had. The bid climate, WashDOT, as well as Sound Transit, have been seeing bids 10% to 40% over engineer's estimate. In addition to that, the engineer's estimate is so close to the maximum available funding for the construction that there's very little contingency available to handle unknowns that are encountered during construction. The nuance here, and why WashDOT is asking for a share for that wall from Issaquah, is that if the bid is above the maximum available, the bid is automatically rejected. The request from WashDOT, if you recall, from January 29th, is $3 million from the city, which is approximately half of what the additional cost would be to build the wall as part of their project. And what that does is it increases the maximum available amount, which would help pay for the additional costs associated with the city's request. At the January 29th meeting, it was uncertain when a decision by the city would be required and needed by WashDOT with regard to their ask. Since that time, WashDOT has informed us that the request is needed, the answer, I should say, is needed by April 2nd. That's a little bit of background. I'm going to go a little bit more now into what the projects are, what the plan is, and then, next steps. The area in red here is specifically the pinch point area, which was the original smaller-scaled project that had a $5.6 million unfunded amount to it. This is the area where WashDOT is planning to build a retaining wall, excavate out the material, and provide us with additional right-of-way to work in, so we can provide pedestrian and non-motorized facilities through this area. It's approximately 1,200 feet long, and this area of work is integral to any project along this road that's going to provide a continuous bicycle and pedestrian facility to connect South Cove to the State Park and beyond. WashDOT's ask is, on this one, again, is for $3 million, and it's for this area only. As Beth mentioned, the committee's recommendation is actually for a larger project. That larger project is shown in yellow. It would extend from Southeast 93rd all the way to the State Park entrance, where it is today. It's an additional $9 million for the larger project above the 5.6 that's already identified for the smaller project. So, some quick graphics, brief information about the pinch point itself. This is a Google Street View. You can see the road narrows quite tightly through here, between I-90 on the left and the steep drop-off to the right, which goes down to the homes. If you look, you can see a, where's my mouse? Here's a car coming out. As you can see, that car is barely visible, and the driver has hard time seeing as well, and it is on a very steep driveway. This is the reason why we have a pinch point. There's no room to do any work in. What WashDOT's planning to do under their contract, which is plan to go out to bid on March 18th, is they're planning to construct a new retaining wall here, as well as sound walls on top of it. And then, the area that is shown right here is an existing wall with some fill that leads up to I-90 Main Line. Once they build this wall and retaining structure, they will excavate this material out, providing the additional room for bicycle and pedestrian facilities for the city to come in at a later point in time to build. So, if the city were to fund the $3 million, there would be still a $2.6 million unfunded amount for the city to come in later and build the wall, if it's only in the smaller area. I'm noticing Councilmember Winterstein shaking his head, and so I'd like to-
May I ask a question?
Sure, you bet.
If we designate $3 million for WashDOT for this project, that does not reduce the cost of that project to us?
No, it does not. What I'm saying is that that would have already come out of the unfunded conversation, and you'd still have remaining unfunded to get to the project that the committee desires. You're right, it's currently unfunded. The $3 million is unfunded.
Well, the smaller section of the pinch point, where you originally showed in red, which I think you said was 5.6 million-
Correct.
Right. That $3 million that we're talking about is not part of that 5.6.
It is.
That's just to get the wall. That's just to make sure that WashDOT builds that wall.
That $3 million is part of the 5.6.
Okay, that's not how we understood it, but okay. I know we're not making any final decisions tonight. Thank you.
Right, right, no, but, okay. So, this is the pinch point and cross-section. It's not to scale, it's just graphical representation. From an artist's rendering perspective, or I should say, an engineer's rendering perspective, generally, this is what it's going to look like through the area of the WashDOT retaining wall and sound wall. The lower part of this is the retaining wall, the upper part is the sound wall. They're just going to leave a gravel area here for the city to come in later and do the improvements that it needs to do between the wall and the edge of pavement here on the north side. Next steps is the administration preparing an agenda bill, working with WashDOT to prepare a draft agreement for the council's consideration on March 18th, to make a decision on the $3 million request that WashDOT has made for sharing in the wall cost in the pinch point area. And with that, if there's any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, I'm going to pass it back to Beth.
Beth, do you have additional financial information to present?
I have a summary.
Is it okay if we get through the final summary and then we open it up for questions? Okay. You're up, Beth.
Okay, that went a little bit smoother this time. So, just to summarize where we are from a financial perspective, again, committee is recommending using existing debt service capacity, $14 million. Sales tax would afford us $26 million for a total of $40 million. The transportation capital priorities identified by the ad hoc committee, total $38.8 million. This leaves some wiggle room of $1.2 million, and in addition, we have not tapped the VLF if there are future needs, and it preserves property tax for other purposes. So, this is sort of the financial summary of what the ad hoc committee is recommending. And then, just want to, before turning this over to council for questions and discussion, the staff is seeking direction from the council about whether it supports the ad hoc committee's recommended revenue strategies, whether the council supports the recommended $38.8 million project list, including the Newport Way strategy that Sheldon discussed, and then, if council has a desire, a timeline for implementing the plan. I will point out, in terms of implementing the plan, if there is a desire to go to ballot with the sales tax, we do have some deadlines. So, if there is a desire to put this on the August ballot, we would have to get the complete ballot package to the King County Voters' Office by early May. If there's a desire to get this on the November general election, 2019 general election, there's a deadline in early August. I also want to point out that, once the sales tax is approved, if it's approved, we would have to wait till the end of the quarter, after which the election is certified, to implement the sales tax. So, for example, if you put this on the ballot in November, the city would not be able to start levying the sales tax increase until April 1st of 2020. There is a two-month lag on when we actually receive the revenues from the state, so that the first payment wouldn't start rolling in until June of 2020. So, just want to give you that on timeline. These rules apply, whether it's put on the ballot this year, next year, but just to make you aware, as you are considering how you wish to proceed, and then, depending on the information you provide to us tonight, that will influence when and how we come back to the committee.
Thank you. So, it is time for questions, and then discussion. Any other questions? Councilmember Hunt.
I had many questions. So, the first one is about the sales tax, and the agenda material says that the sales tax would support transportation-related investments, so I wondered if the sales tax has a time limit on it.
If it is tied to debt, then it stays in place until the debt is retired.
So, if it were a 10-year debt, it would be in place for 10 years-
Yes.
And then it would go back to-
The original, unless the council decided to reimpose the sales tax, although that would require a vote as well, is my understanding.
Okay, so on the ballot, it would say it's a 10-year-
Yes.
Increase?
Or 20, yes.
Oh, 20. Depending on the-
Yes.
It would say the length of the bond. I would like more information about the pros and cons of using the general funds, and also of any other methods, other than the vehicle license and the property tax. So, were there other funding methods that were discussed by the ad hoc committee, and then, pros and cons of those?
Yes, to a certain extent, yes. So, first, to use the general funds, there frankly is not a lot of capacity within the current revenue streams to afford this level of investment. And to dedicate the existing general fund, I assume you're talking general fund revenue as opposed to fund balance, which I touched on briefly in my presentation, but if you want both, I could talk about both. So, if the council were to decide to allocate general fund revenues to pay for this debt, it would take away from investments and other things like operating costs. So, we just don't have a lot of growth in the general fund, so don't feel like there's a lot of capacity, particularly when considering other council priorities that we know are coming down the pike, particularly related to the strategic plan.
Okay.
Can I, I would actually like to also address that question. So, in December of 2017, when authorizing the transportation benefit district, we had a pretty extensive conversation. It was the tail end of a long budget season, but we did, and we talked quite a bit about the sales tax versus the property tax. And I would say that in the ad hoc finance committee, by and large, I personally, as one of seven, deferred to that conversation. I hate regressive taxes. The only really progressive tax that we have is, and this isn't true for seniors on a fixed income, but, I mean, the closest that we have to a progressive tax is a property tax. However, it was the will of the council at the time, I think, with the preference to the transportation benefit district, both because it would allow a larger lever arm, if you will, on what we could do, but also, more philosophically, this idea that was mentioned earlier about the fact that it would be a larger pool, if you will, and would affect the people who come to Issaquah to do business in Issaquah, they contribute to some traffic. But, to your question, I think it was that, at least I, in ad hoc finance, really wanted to stay as much as possible, supporting the decision that was made by council in December 2017.
Any other committee members want to make a comment that might help Councilmember Hunt understand? Marie?
I'm just going to kind of pile on a bit with what President March was talking about, which is, one of the things that I liked about the transportation benefit district in using the sales tax is, part of our traffic is generated locally, and part of our traffic is generated outside of our city. And the best way to match the cost of the transportation initiatives with the source of revenue for the transportation initiatives was really to use the sales tax, which was a way to share the burden across different constituencies.
Councilmember Winterstein, do you want to-
Yeah, I would, and thank you for the question. I think you also asked about the general fund, use of the general fund, and I do, Beth did mention earlier, and I do agree with this, philosophically, the idea of borrowing, especially at the rates that we can get, allows us, as we get access to the money and then pay that off, the taxes we collect over the 20 years will come from those people that are currently, haven't contributed anything to our roads, or people who haven't yet, right? So, the idea that you borrow money and then pay that off over a term such as 20 years, then, future beneficiaries will be contributing to the cost of that. To use cash on hand, basically, it's what people have already contributed, and they'll be benefiting people in the future who maybe wouldn't have paid toward that at all. That means something to me. That means something to me, and both my colleagues have said something about- And both my colleagues have said something about the TBD and the 2% aspect as well. And I do, we discussed it quite a bit, and I did agree with what was said earlier, but I do want to share with the group one more. This is a little bit more, I've done some research on that particular piece, and these are actual, these are actual numbers. So, in January and February of 2019, my household paid $138 in Issaquah city sales tax. That comes from, we bought books and clothing and did some dining out, bought some dog food and some special grocery items, and I paid for 60,000-mile maintenance on my vehicle, and I updated my, I renewed my Amazon Prime membership, and I went, got some over-the-counter medications, we bought some computer supplies, I bought a special tool for my bicycle, bought some toiletries. I mean, I've been keeping track of this because I knew this was coming. I wanted to get a sense of what this would actually be. So, I've actually been tracking all of this. Now, other things that we purchased, such as airline tickets, a hotel stay, some other travel costs, other expenses outside of Issaquah, those don't count. All our utilities, our utility taxes, sewer, water, phone, cable, and others, there's no sales tax involved with that. Any auto, home, or medical insurance, there's no sales tax with that. So, and any medical expenses, most of them don't have sales tax. So, when I add all that up and did a little bit of math, basically, 2%, 0.2% more would have meant I would have spent less than $3 more than I actually did. So, if I extrapolate that over a year, if our sales tax was 10.2 instead of 10.0, it would mean somewhere, at that spending rate, didn't make a lot of large purchases, so it could go up anywhere from $15 to $25 extra, than I would have paid otherwise. So, that, with those numbers, you know, I talked to a few people and tried to get a sense of that, and the general reaction has been that, at that level, it didn't feel so regressive, especially because we would also be collecting it from non-citizens who came here and shopped, or bought services, and it would be spread out. So, it would be leveraged significantly by the retail business and others within the city. So, it's this combination of reasons why I favored that option, and instead of, including, instead of using cash on hand. And the last comment I'll say, and it's not really related to your question, Vicki, but the one option you have up there using existing debt capacity, I want everybody to know that that is the no new taxes option. There was two up there. There's a no new taxes option, that's about 14 million, and then this sales tax was the balance that we could potentially raise.
Thank you. So, what I'm doing here, since we're going to have a discussion later on and kind of go through some policy questions and do some thumbs up and down so we can get some direction back, is I'm, thank you for the explanation, that's helpful. I am just leaving that down as an open question for when we get to, do you support the ad hoc finance committee's recommendation, in which case, the other four councilmembers are taking question and answer right now, so that they can form their decision. So, would you like to continue with your questions?
Yes.
Thank you, councilmember Hunt.
And thank you to the ad hoc committee for the added information. That was actually just very helpful, so I really appreciate it. And then I have a few more questions. One is about the projected revenue. You said it was conservative, and I wondered what assumptions go into that and how conservative, basically more understanding of how that projection gets made.
Yeah, so as I said in my remarks earlier, that it is based on our 2017 actual sales tax activity. We have seen increase in retail activity since then, so in that sense, it is a conservative And we also are assuming that it stays flat over the life of the debt. So, there should be some growth, but sales tax, as I mentioned, is an extremely volatile revenue source. So, when the economy contracts, that is one of the first revenues that starts contracting. And just to give you some context, during the Great Recession, over, I believe it was a two-year period, it's been a while since I looked at this, but I believe it was over a two-year period, the city saw its sales tax collections contract by 25%. So, using a $2 million flat revenue over a 20-year period was a straightforward way of taking into account those fluctuations. And again, you know, ultimately, it's the council's decision, but as finance director who lived through the Great Recession, I would not recommend maxing this out and being too aggressive with this, because you're going to have to pay those debt service payments regardless of whether the revenue materializes or not. So, if you took some overly aggressive revenue assumptions on this, and you tied the debt to that, and the revenue didn't materialize, we would be having to look, for example, in the general fund to make those payments. Again, you know, we will be updating these numbers if there is a desire for the council to pursue this. As we get, for example, 2018 data, we can look at this again, but for planning purposes, this conservative number seemed like a good ballpark.
Thank you. I think this is related. So, next steps in the agenda bill, it talked about refined revenue estimates, and I wondered if that meant the sales tax revenues or general fund revenues, or what?
Well, we are going to be reporting back to the council, hopefully in the next month or so, on how we finish 2018. So, that's in general, but in the context of this, it would be looking, if the committee, if the council desired to pursue the sales tax, it would be looking at refining these sales tax numbers.
Would that change the projection in terms of how much?
It could, it could, I mean, it could, and it could, it could conceivably increase the amount available, but again, it's, you know, we're going to have to be looking at, you know, does the economy contract in 2020, like many people are projecting? And if that's the case, then right out of the gate, you know, this number may not be what we were anticipating. You know, there's, with predicting the economy and predicting revenues such as sales tax, there is some difficulty, again, having lived through the Great Recession and having to do lots of mid-year adjustments because the revenues didn't materialize. Hopefully, we don't live through something like that again, but it's hard to predict the extent of a scale back and for how long it will last.
Okay. I have a question, which I think might be more of a Sheldon question. This is regarding the pinch point?
Yes.
Project and the 3 million for Wash Dot?
Yes.
And it's, my understanding is that it's sort of a buffer on their overall project costs, so that bids, to try to prevent bids from being too high, I mean, and being closer to what actually will come in. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, what is, what is that percent of the whole cost, do you know approximately?
Their total project costs, which included engineering and construction management and construction and all the other associated costs with the project, the budget connecting Washington, I think, was 71.3, so this would make it a $74.3 million project.
Okay. Was it on that question? But I, just, I guess as a comment, it seems that if the, it seems like a small percent on the overall, but it's also what we're being advised is what they need to have.
On the overall, it's a small percent.
Yeah.
But when you take a look at it, and you take out all the soft costs, engineering and things like that, and you come down just to a construction contract, it becomes a larger percent. And so, they're looking for that larger percent against the construction contract is what they're looking for, because that's where the margin is, the risk is. It's on the construction contract.
And then, I have a last question. So, one of the things that we'll be discussing, and maybe we can hold this for the discussion later, but one of the things that we're discussing later is about if this would go back to committee or if this would go to the full council. And so, I wondered, from the committee's perspective, what the pros and cons would be of doing that.
Yeah, we are going to, I have that as one of your discussion questions as well. So, do you want the?
That's fine, we can discuss.
Would you like to get the information on what the pros and cons would be now, and then save the council conversation? Because they can definitely talk about the pros and cons.
Sure, if that's the, well, if that's the way the conversation is.
Yeah, I would say that's not necessarily a question for the finance director, it's a question for the council. It's your prerogative as to whether or not you would like the next conversation to be with the full or to go back to ad hoc.
I think Vicki's is trying to determine what's the difference between those two choices. Do we have an opinion on that?
I think it still depends on other comments that councilmembers might make about their comfort level with recommendations.
Okay. So, it depends on where we are tonight. Other questions? Councilmember March?
Actually, I'd like to try to answer that. I mean, my take is, the baby is born at this point, you know, there is a draft that is now out there. I, I mean, I'd never say never, but I don't see this going back to ad hoc finance at this point. Ad hoc finance was about looking at the financial models, particularly a bunch of work that occurred last year and continuing that on this year. Now, we do have a draft in front of us, and I can't imagine a scenario where we would then take it back to ad hoc finance unless the council loved the idea of transportation but hated this particular draft and told us to go back and start over from scratch.
Okay, thank you for that. That's the kind of information I was looking for.
Other questions? Councilmember Walsh.
So, I feel like there are two buckets of conversation and question here, so I'll start with the finance. Did we consider an increase to BNO tax, or anything that would focus on business rather than consumer?
I'll answer that. That was part of the very early conversation council had, probably two, three years ago, when we looked at all funding sources before council took action on the Transportation Benefit District. So, that was discussed, it was not an option that council pursued beyond that, though.
Similarly, any sense of looking at developer impact fees, or, we've always had this conversation of growth pays for growth, and I understand there's some limitations on that, on the percentage that they can fund of past needs. Is there any sense of going to that as a source?
That source will be utilized for some of these projects, depending on whether or not they're eligible for those mitigation impact fees.
So, this is the remaining unfunded?
That's correct.
Portion. Okay. Fantastic.
Just want to add a clarification on that, too. So, the growth impact fees can be used where capacity is added. So, if projects are not adding capacity, they would qualify as being related to that development, then the fees are not used. So, they're, if we have a deficit in our system, like a road that maybe we should have fixed a long time ago, or found a funding source for, impact fees are not a great resource for that. If it's not a capacity adding project.
So, on the project side of things, Sheldon, if I'm looking back at our most recent capital improvement plan for the 2018-2022 CIP, the unfunded project list there shows 60 million in unfunded portion. So, I'm wondering how we get from the 60 to 113. I know you said something about, oh, you know, projects change. That seems like a lot of change to me. Am I missing something?
The two major influences there on that differential are the two Newport Way projects. There's been, since those estimates were done, the economy has changed, environmental complexities in design, you find out more information about how much right-of-way is needed. We went through conceptual plan developments that hadn't been fleshed out completely at the time in which the conceptual cost estimate had been done. When you get more into the detail, you get a little bit more refined, and unfortunately, the refinements increase those project costs dramatically.
So, that leaves me with a lot of uncertainty around this idea of saying, we're taking in funding. Is there any portion of this remaining that has that level of uncertainty?
When you say of this list?
Of the remaining list that's the 38.8?
No, those projects are pretty well-defined, like the Southeast 43rd Signal, that's 95, 99% designed, ready to go. We're, the, let's see, what are the other projects on the list? The pinch point is pretty well-defined. The expanded project, conceptually, we believe we have a pretty good estimate on that. While it's still conceptual, there's caveats, because we haven't done all the specific environmental studies, but we feel like we're pretty close on that. I'd say no, there's probably no more dramatic ones like those two projects.
Okay. I know that there's about 7 million on park acquisitions, and so, obviously, land cost changes quite a bit. Do we feel like there's risk of that ballooning?
I wouldn't be the one to answer?
I know.
That question on parks, but it's going to be subject to real estate market.
Yeah, that was a pretty good answer. I think, since we don't have necessarily exact parcels that make up that 7 million, we will scale to that, and that's the way the city has pursued open space acquisition in the past. We've sort of established criteria, do we want to acquire floodplain for management, repair in habitat areas, steep slopes, et cetera, et cetera. And then, we look at the parcels that fit that criteria, and as they become available, as we're able to negotiate, and as we have funds available, then we try to make all those pieces fit together.
Yeah, there's a little bit less risk on the park side, because if we run out of funding, we just don't purchase a portion, we aren't having to stop an entire project that doesn't have funding.
That's also a reason why you use conservative revenue estimates, that you probably want, in a final package, to build in some contingency for unforeseen, so that's an added element for consideration.
Yeah, so that was another question I was going to come up. Does that 1.2 that you've kind of built in there feel like enough?
That's some follow-up work that we would need to do, and again, by going with a conservative revenue estimate, you know, there theoretically should be some flex in there, but that would be, you know, we, this was being presented to the committee and now to the council as a ballpark of what a scenario might look like. From my perspective, if the council wants to pursue this, we've got more due diligence to do to make sure that we are putting forward a package, including, depending on when we would go to ballot, looking again at the timing of the investments, because what we're basing this on was timing that was established last August, if there was a desire to pursue these in 2019. Most of these, we are likely not going to be able to pursue in 2019, so we're going to have to push all of that out, time that with when the revenue would come in, refine the estimates. You know, one risk of pushing things out is, you know, if the economy contracts, maybe costs come down, but if there's strength in the economy, those costs go up, and that's an inherent problem for, you know, anytime you are doing funding of capital projects.
Yeah, yeah. Man, I had a question, but I was so into what you were saying, Beth.
Councilmember March?
I actually want to respond a little bit, and maybe they'll give you the time to think about what your question was. And I want to add on that question of timing, right? So, right now, we're saying of a potential $40 million that we think, with this, with this funding set of mechanisms, you would have, if you did seven for parks, you would have 14 available from Councilmatic Bond Authority essentially as soon as we want, but then the other 26 would come from the But then the other 26 would come from that TBD, which would be whenever we got around to presenting that to the public for potential authorization, right? So there's also this timing of, you couldn't do more than 14 million of it until you did that TBD. So there's sort of a, there's a potential phased approach on, on a first round of things that could be done sooner before going to the public for the TBD.
Did you remember your question? Okay.
It's in there, I'll come back to.
And Deputy Counsel President Patisse.
Thank you. I think I've got a question for Sheldon. And some of my questions have been answered through the great questions coming from my fellow council members. But to follow up a little bit on just the risk, I wanted to talk a little bit about the funding through right of way for Newport and those additional amounts that would be left out there. What, I know that going with option number three seems to make really good sense in terms of not losing any, not having sunken costs and being able to move forward with the Newport, both pieces of Newport, and going to the right of way on option number three. But what are the, can you speak a little bit to what remaining risk would be there? With option number three, we're still having these big chunks set aside that still need to be funded. And those amounts could potentially go up, I'm assuming. So I just wanted to know more.
Thank you. So over time, yes, the, just inflation and so forth will raise your construction costs. Depends on the economy, it could go up, it could go down. We saw in the 2008, 2010 timeframe, construction costs were going down dramatically because the contractors were very hungry. Some of it depends upon that. But just on an average basis, you would expect the cost to go up. So that's one risk. A second risk that we think is somewhat mitigated is, is that by preserving your federal funding, going through your phases, you actually become a stronger applicant and competitor for grants, both federal and state money. And so providing the opportunity to go after other funds and then maybe splitting the projects up and phasing them in into smaller chunks after you've got your right of way done and so forth, enhances your opportunity for getting grants and outside funding. And then as development comes in, they pay their impact fees. So it all helps start to bring that funding package together. And so it's buying the city time to mitigate those risks that are associated with those large construction costs.
City Administrator would like to add some comments.
I'd also like to add that we're going through an exercise right now to look at possible cost savings on the project. So value engineering work has been underway for at least one segment of this, these two Newport projects. And we will eventually be bringing back that information to the council and possibly as well to community if we think that there are good viable options there.
Okay, Lindsey.
I remembered.
Great.
We've kind of marqueeed the sales tax at 0.2%. Is there an option underneath that amount that does not require us to go to voters?
I believe whatever increase you would impose requires voter approval. But there are jurisdictions in King County that have gone to the 0.1%. City of Seattle is one of them. And the other one is North Bend, no, sorry. Enhamclaw has gone to the 0.1. So their sales tax rate, instead of 10%, it's 10.1%. The other two cities in King County that have implemented have gone to 0.2%. And I don't know about the rest of the state of Washington, but King County is obviously our nearest neighbor. So that's a mark for you to consider.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Beth, sticking with the sales tax topic, is there any, this, we got an email today also with a question from somebody in the, in the public who wanted to know if we've done any analysis or have any way to know what kind of an impact an increase in the sales tax would have on, first on businesses, you know, if somebody might stay away from Issaquah because of the increase. And then, second of all, there would be an analysis on potentially the impact to businesses. And then also, that would potentially affect the sales tax, how much we get. Is there any way to know, like, maybe where that?
We have not done that analysis. To do that kind of analysis, I don't feel like I've got the capability of doing that analysis. So, but, you know, there are people that could do that analysis if that was the desire of the council. I will also add, it's a little bit different, but maybe something to think about. Seattle implemented the sweetened beverage tax. And there was thought that, oh, people will go buy their soda somewhere else. Seattle is seeing way more revenue from that source than they anticipated. So, you know, it's not exactly the same, but that, that's an example of where a tax was imposed, that it could have influenced people's shopping decisions, but it didn't. And, you know, ultimately, in many cases, people are influenced by convenience. And, and as Councilmember Winterstein pointed out, the relative impact, again, acknowledging that there is a regressive quality to this tax. So, you know, it will impact some more than others. But for most people, it wouldn't be significant. Again, for lower income people, people on a fixed income, yes, it can make a difference.
Or potentially influence people when they make bigger purchases. If you just want to save a few hundred dollars on a large purchase, you might go somewhere else, which would impact a business, too. So then I have a question for Sheldon. This is on Exhibit A, the list of seven. I read the package, so I hope I didn't miss something here. We've, we talked mostly, if not exclusively, about the Newport Way projects and the Pinch Point. Can you quickly go down this list of seven and tell me, as at the end of 2022, where we would, and with this 113, 5 million, what we would expect to have accomplished with these projects? So for example, the Providence Point Signal, what does 8.1 million get us? Is that the whole project? Is that just?
That's the entire project.
Okay.
It finishes it.
And then Newport Way, 54900, I think what you've talked about tonight is right of way acquisition, but not construction?
Correct.
Okay.
For both Newport Ways.
Okay. Central Park Signal?
That would take it design through construction.
And Northwest Gilman, concept development?
That would be the concept development. And going through and just having a concept for it, so we know what Gilman's going to look like. So when development comes in, they know where the frontage improvements are.
Okay, and the 12th and SR900 intersection?
This is the project that is in the Costco Development Agreement. And that would bring us through construction.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's President Mertz, followed by Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, so I have a question for Sheldon. And it has to do with, you know, this is a subset of the 100 and whatever, $13,000 worth of transportation that we identified. So I just want to understand, there was a, the sort of comment around the Newport west of 900, out to 54. We have done a bunch of work already, right? Like, I remember back in 2003, 2004, when I first got here, I used to bicycle home from Seattle. And that stretch of Newport was like pitch black and like a one foot to six inch wide shoulder on each side, right? So we've, we've done a lot since then, right? We haven't done all this, obviously. But how much have we invested in improvements to Newport west of 900?
You're correct. There was substantial investment, I believe, in 2007, where the north, northeasterly shoulder was widened to the current 10 to 12-foot wide path with curb stops to separate traffic from the, from the pedestrian pathway on the north side of the road. As well as the roadway was restriped to provide narrower travel lanes, but then provide a small shoulder area where the more experienced cyclists can use. So there was, and that extended from SR900 all the way to Lakemont, to the city limits on the western end of the road, about two and a half miles worth of work. And then there was, over the section from approximately Oak Crest to 900, there were some pedestrian scale lighting that was also put in with the trail at that point.
Do you know roughly how much that was?
That section was done by developer, I'm guessing that section was around a million dollars on the developer's dime. And then the rest of it from there to the western city limits was roughly 3/4 of a million dollars. So overall, you know, between the developer and the city, i.e. the city's requirement of the developer, roughly 1 and 3/4 million dollars.
Thank you.
Deputy Council, oh, sorry. Councilmember Winterstein, followed by Deputy Council President Patisse.
Thank you. Sheldon, we're going to be discussing the potential funding, forwarding some money or committing some money to WashDOT at a future meeting?
That's correct. There's an agenda bill being drafted. And it's for the March 18 regular business item on council agenda.
Okay, and so this is really, I want to make a request, you know, for that when it comes forward? Because I don't know that that's coming through a committee before then.
No, it's not. The ad hoc committee was recommending our early consideration for funding that as part of this whole big conversation. But you're correct, it's not going to be referred to committee because of the timeframe in which we need to have a response back to WashDOT.
Okay, so recalling the representative from WashDOT that was here, like you reminded us, Ms. George and her presentation.
Kathy George, yes.
Kathy George, yes. And the history of that project, I'm still struggling with that quite a bit. But I think we did learn, so I'm going to make one point to share with what happened at ad hoc, and then have a request or a question in the form of a question for you for when we do get to this. You told us at, when we met, that as currently put together, this package that was going to go out for advertisement on March 18, that that picture that you showed with the retaining wall moved over, a sound wall up there, some more space for us, that that's, that's in that project. And if they get a single bid, if there's no new money from us and they get a single bid that comes in underneath the budget for that, then that project's going to get built and we're going to get our space.
That is correct.
Right? So it's completely possible that we could get what we want without putting any money in. However, we've been warned that due to some risk and some other uncertainties, and this has been a funny project. It was going to be lane hardening, and now it's auxiliary lanes. And it's quite different. I mean, similar but different. But, but it is just lanes, and it's not rocket science. It's not like we're building pontoons on Lake Washington. It's, the idea that this thing could be so off is kind of interesting to me. And, but if we put $3 million in, or any amount in, and the, whatever the bid comes in at, and then what the project actually costs, it's poss, we will get, we'll get what we want. We could potentially get our, not actually pay anything. Because, and so if the construction costs, I'm going to make up some numbers. If it was 50 and we put three toward that and it was 53, but they actually did it for 49, we're not paying anything. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's, it's a commitment of up to 3 million is what WashDOT's asking for. If they can do it within their budget and not need any of our three, then we would spend zero.
Yeah, so it's essentially a contingency fund.
Yes.
It really, it really is. Okay, so I thought, I think that's really important, is that, that's why I feel it's kind of funny to say that that's three as part of the 5.6. I don't quite understand that because, because we can get that with paying nothing. So anyway, so I think that's very important is, and we're going to talk about that more at a later one. So it's potentially that we could get what we want out of that from WashDOT and not pay anything. I think that's important. And even if we commit the sum number, up to 3 million, we could still pay zero on that because it came within, at a different number. So that, I think that's very important for everybody. Then my request would be for you, and we consider this again, is, is, I know it's about to go out to advertisement, and this idea that engineers' estimates across the board are coming, you know, they're coming in 10 to 40% above. I mean, this, this idea that WashDOT does advertisements and, and they put numbers out there and they're pretty sure that numbers are going to come in 10 to 40% higher? That, I'm struggling, that just doesn't sound credible to me. So my request for you is, I'd like a little bit more, some actuals about projects, and if that could be collected, about, you know, what the ask was in a WashDOT project, what the bids came in at?
Or related to this, Paul, or related to the bill that's coming on March?
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is a question for the bill that's coming in later in two weeks that we'll see. Is, is, it would be like, because that pertains to this whole package here, I think. Because it's this project, when this project is on here, it's related. But that would be a request I have for that meeting. I'd like to get a little bit more than just, hey, projects are coming in high and we think there's some risk. I think some actual project performance on the asks, what they were advertised in and then what was actually, what they actually came in at would be very helpful.
Is that possible?
Yeah, that is.
Questions? Oh, Mariah, go ahead.
Thank you. So I, back to, back to the Newport, the two sections of Newport, I'm curious if, if the ad hoc committee talked about any other option? If, if the conversation stopped at the design and right of way? Or was there, so bear with my non-technical, non-engineering question here. But was there another logical step beyond that where we didn't get all the way through full funding? But there, you know, maybe we went to 50 million instead of 38 million? Was, was there a conversation that went beyond the design and right of way? Another incremental step?
I think that the answer to that question is better coming from the finance director because I think it has to deal with the limited resources of the ability to service debt. So I'm going to let Beth respond to that one. It wasn't a technical question.
Way to punt there. I would agree with Sheldon, and certainly committee members feel free to chime in, that it was more of the limitation on what the revenue sources were. Now, certainly, the committee or the council could say, if we, you know, found, or let's say, we didn't have to spend the 3 million on the Pinch Point, could you put that towards one of the Newport projects? You know, that is a discussion that could be had. But I would say, maybe back to Sheldon of, you know, when you've got, you know, a $50 million construction project, does, you know, does something on the margins like that make a difference of, you know, can you get partway through construction? That then becomes a Sheldon question. But really, I think in the committee discussions, it was more looking at how do we scale what we're doing with the revenues available to a logical sort of point in each project? Also taking into account the federal, the federal rules that Sheldon spoke of in terms of, of timing and what that affords us in terms of additional timing to, to make these later investments.
That's a member, Mariah, Councilmember Winterstein.
So this, this is clearly a Sheldon question. So one of, one of the issues we wrestled with was the investment. So one of the issues we wrestled with was the investment in Newport Way to get to right-of-way was so that we would not have to refund grants that we had already received. What's the magnitude of the grants that we would potentially have to refund?
Currently, we have about $3.3 million, which we've spent probably a little over half of that to date, but we're still under contract with consultants to continue with the design work, which that money was allocated for. And we have an additional 5.1, I believe the number was, that should be coming to us in 2019 and '20 that we can use towards those projects.
If we stop today, all the work on Newport, how much would we have to return?
I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I'd be guessing somewhere around $2 million bucks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
I just wanted to follow up your question. Yes, the short answer is no.
Didn't go beyond that.
We didn't go beyond that.
Okay, there you go. We needed that next part of the sentence. So let's focus a few more questions. It doesn't mean there are no questions, but I want to leave you enough time to have your discussion amongst the seven of you as to the questions that are in the agenda bill about, do you agree with what you see? There is no formal motion tonight, but we are looking for some direction, so. Councilmember Hunt.
I have another question. Sorry. I'll come back up. So it's about, it's about that we are putting forward the 3 million for the pinch point, but then in the recommendation, it's actually 5.6 million, and it might be that we end up paying zero of that 5.6.
Of that three.
No.
Oh, so we might, so I, 2.6.
No matter what, you have 2.6 that you would have to come up with.
Okay.
The 3 million is, depending on how much WashDOT needs out of the 3 million.
Okay. So I think because that one is, has this contingency on another funding, or on the bids, et cetera, that one, for me, it's always difficult, the way it's presented, to understand. So I think that's just my request next time, is for the three, the 2.6 is definite, and then the three is potential, but the three is required for a commitment at a set time coming forward. And, oh, and then I had another question, which I think is for the committee, possibly also for Sheldon, though, which is about the Central Park signal and why that is on this particular list, just because that's one that I don't think we've had as much recent, at least in my time on council, as much conversation about that one. And so I just wondered from the, why that one, and if there's a broader conversation about why these specific ones, then that's fine, but that one in particular seems like we've had less discussion, less recent discussion about it.
Want to start with that one, Sheldon?
Sure, I can start with that one. So that project is in the capital plan, and it's shown to be debt-financed. And so it had shown up in the 2019 budget to do some pre-designed study work, and that money is predicated on the revenues coming from a debt issuance. And so the project in itself is unfunded because it was expected to be 100% debt issuance.
Not sure that that really got to the question.
Okay.
I think the question is, it seems a bit of an outlier, and we haven't heard a lot of public comment about this particular thing, we haven't so many of the others.
Oh.
So.
I can catch you next time.
I can.
So a couple of reasons, because I think I was one of the people who pushed this one for, for the ad hoc, and two reasons for me. One is, there had been a fair amount of conversation about it, and it revolved a lot around safety issues around Central Park, and that resonated with me as something that was really important. And it was trying to figure out where, and then there was a certain amount of, okay, Tetris-ing in, if you will, these sorts of things fit within that budget that we were looking at. So, but fundamentally, I was moved, I thought this one was important because of the public safety issues around it.
Council President Mertz.
Sure. Another response to that is, there's two things about the items that are on this list for me. One is that I think they all involve really commitments that we have made at various times to the community, and honoring those commitments. But I think they also all have had at various times really, really robust public engagement. And this particular item, I remember, I remember really well because I was chair of services and safety when last it got discussed. And I don't know if anybody who's currently on the dais was with me, but let me tell you, Highlands residents gave, as, I mean, to go further back and have had a larger public response in services, I have to go back to the senior center. I mean, it was, it's really something that the public from the Highlands told us was super, super important. We just haven't talked about it in a while.
Councilmember Winterstein, Councilmember Hunt?
Just to offer mine as well, it was kind of simple. A lot of work did go into formulating the capital plan, and I appreciate Lindsey noting that, you know, and as published in 2017, these projects, and that 60 does include some parks projects as well, but along with three different parks projects, these projects, there's one smaller one that's no longer in it. This was the list that we said in our overall capital plan for transportation that was not funded in this period from 19 through '22. That was, that's why that and all of them are in here. They were the starting point from our original capital plan. And, and yes, and since we've started talking about these as potential funding, we haven't spent nearly as much time on that one. I personally felt, because the investment and the work that went into prioritize and put it in the capital plan as it was, was justification.
Councilmember Hunt, did you want to follow up?
Thank you for all that context. I think that my ask, if this does, this will return to council at some form, so my ask would be that the different items be given more context, also because we don't have the opportunity of reviewing the discussions that were held in the ad hoc committee for the rationale for each project, because right now we have different amount of information about the different projects and the information that's presented, and they're all big.
Let me ask you a question on that. So you, what I'm hearing is you're not asking necessarily for project rationale, like, why do you want to do this work? You're asking, why do you want to put it in this bucket and fund it this way, is your question? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So there's, there'll be the bit of history in there, but really, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're just wondering, does it belong with the rest of the list, which is one of the questions here as well tonight that we have to talk about.
Right. And I, it's also a comment about the materials that are presented here because there's unequal distribution of context information about the different items on the list. And so in the future, to have more information about all of the items and the discussion around all of the items, why they were in the list would be helpful.
Councilmember Walsh?
I'll second that idea, just the way that this agenda bill was pulled together with the justification for where the projects changed off of the CIP, and then basically going into it and going, well, there's no conversation about these other four things that are on the unfunded list. It seemed a little bit odd going into that. So I would appreciate next time just looking at that and presenting it a little bit differently.
I think I saw Councilmember Winterstein. Did you want to chime in on this, or no?
Oh, no.
Okay. And then a question for the administration. You're hearing a request for some additional information. Have you heard what you need, or do you have extra, any additional questions?
No, I have what I need.
Okay. That's my main.
No, I don't think we need additional information, but I, you're still going to pose questions in terms of.
I haven't gone into the question piece, yeah.
Awesome.
Yep. Okay. So thank you for that, and it's not to say we won't have any more questions, because when you're talking about these different items, you know, we may need to, you may need to ask for additional information. But I wanted to move to some of the questions that were in the agenda bill. And the first one being, looking for each of the seven of you that wants to weigh in, getting feedback on the ad hoc long-term finance committees recommended funding options and the project list both, so we can start randomly or voluntarily. Councilmember Winterstein.
And as a member of that committee, I did want to have some opportunity to share just a little bit more. We heard a lot from staff, which was, which I appreciated, but we talked, I think there was more talk among the three of us, and we had a lot to do with the formation of that. And first, I'll say, Beth, I thought your summary was pretty good, and so I appreciated that. And yeah, and yet, in hindsight, it's easy to see, there's some information about some of those other projects that could be there to flush it out. But overall, I think it's an accurate summary of our conversation and where we landed on things. And the only thing that really hasn't been mentioned tonight that I wanted to bring up was, was the Newport Way projects. I originally wanted them in, especially the one, well, both of them, but I also participated in a lot of the public workshops related to the conceptual design of Newport Way between 54th and 900. And that, that is a part of town that's gone, and is currently going through and continue to go through some change for a number of years still. And it was very difficult for me to just join in consensus with the others, but it was, it was completely cost-driven. It's an expensive project, and this idea that we had with this no new taxes option, you could really look at this and saying, without raising any taxes, we can, and, you know, and I did communicate in that meeting as well, to me, the priority was the 43rd, the Providence Point intersection, and then money to do the pinch point. There was like, okay, if we raise new taxes, let's at least do those. And we can kind of do that in terms of, because Councilmember Mertz talked about sequencing, because that's kind of cash, that's going to be cash available to us that becomes available, or comes available regardless of whether or not we borrow anything, just because we'll be paying down other debt. So it was difficult for me. I am very sensitive to the changes on Newport Way. I'm very sensitive to the fact that we got a major thoroughfare with ditches and what that represents for safety, but just also, I think the design of the segment between, between Maple and Sunset, while by itself not going to, you know, dramatically change what the experience is driving around town, in combination with others over time, it's essential. And also, I think just for, especially during certain times of day, especially during rush hour, just the movement on that street, especially with cross streets that intersect that. I mean, I really feel, it's hard for me to imagine that a future Izakua would still have those roads as they are. It's just unimaginable. But in this timeframe, and my, tethered by, or my ambition to, you know, down a little bit, to, you know, come in line with these, because it really was, it was the amount of funding, it was the total cost. And I didn't want to go to the property tax. Well, I'd rather the city, in a very minimalist way, if you think about it this way, you know, do some projects that are locally important, and do them right, and do them good, and earn, earn the citizens' confidence in our ability and our planning and our foresight before we would go back for a larger ask for these also other critical projects.
If I can sum up, for Councilmember Winterstein, you like the project list, and you like the funding mechanism. Next, who wants to put their hand up and go next? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. So this is a huge topic, and I participated in the committee last year, and so I know the, I know the starting point, and so I know how much work the committee has done to get to this point, and I appreciate that. I think it's very thoughtful recommendations. And the, so I don't know about tonight necessarily supporting revenue strategies and the project list. I have the same questions about needing more information about the projects, more information in the agenda bill, which is why I asked Sheldon the questions about those projects that we didn't talk about tonight. The question I have is, where, this is a, is this a first, a first read, a first look at this? So then what's the public, after this, what's the public exposure to this and feedback from the public? Are we, what do we, does this go somewhere else, or is it?
So one of the other questions is, that I have, is the timeframe returning with revenue estimates and in implementation plan, looking for direction. So I can also add on here, public process. And we can see, Emily, did you want to give a comment on what that might look like?
I think there are several options, and that's why we're trying to get feedback. We're trying to understand, are you feeling comfortable enough that you want to take a next step? And then we can discuss what that might be. There are numerous options. If you, I feel like it's very much dependent on how quickly you actually want to be able to construct these improvements, and we sort of have to back up from that time to look at when we would have funding secured, when therefore we would have to go to the people for a vote, et cetera, et cetera. So one possible next step would be to bring back the information that you have requested in addition to some refined revenue estimates, the possible timelines, beginning with what we believe as staff might be the earliest that we could be ready to put something on the ballot. And then, you know, we'd give you a different recommendation that's a little bit further out. And so that would be an opportunity, if you were to keep that with the whole body, to have, to notice it in such a way that we could encourage people to come and provide a little bit of feedback. Certainly, if you chose to then move forward with directing staff to develop ballot language, for example, we could set up additional opportunities for public input. So I think maybe that helps to start to outline what next steps might be and how you might engage the public. We have not had additional conversation with the committee in terms of having some sort of other public forum.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. So I can, I could envision at the, at the next meeting that we, when we talk about the $3 million for WashDOT, assuming that's what the council decides it wants to, wants to do, to consider that the next meeting, I can see more information coming from staff if there's time to do that between now and then with it, or at some point with additional recommendations on implementation, and not presupposing what the council would do, but I can see that coming along with that additional information. And at that point, I also would like information on, you mentioned the ballot language, potential ballot language. When we did this before, there were some surprises that came along with how that actually gets to the ballot and how that gets handled. And so I think we probably have to talk about that, too, who, how that happens.
Okay. And I wanted to ask you a question, Councilmember Goodman. So Sheldon, Councilmember Goodman had some questions on the projects, and they're, in her comments right now, she said that requires some follow-up information, and I'm maybe just forgetting. Is that all clear, what you were looking for, or is it information from somebody else?
No, it is a thumbs up to the information that Councilmember Hunt was asking for about, and that.
Just making sure it wasn't something else.
It's not different.
Okay, great. Thanks. Next? Councilmember Ray, Councilmember Hunt?
So it was a difficult whittling down of initiatives, and I think Councilmember Winterstein spoke to it very well. But in the final analysis, if we did the no-tax option, and we went with 20-year funding, we had about $14 million that we could invest. And the way I kind of fat-thumbed that, and that's why I was asking about how much money we would be giving back on Newport, that gave us enough money to do 43rd Street, meet our obligations under the Costco Development Agreement on 12th Avenue, and probably do the Gilman Concept Development, and that's it. So from a perspective of, do we need additional revenue funds? It's pretty clear to me that to make any kind of meaningful impact, we needed to find an additional fund, source of funding. And we talked about a number of different options, and as a result of those discussions, the property, or the sales tax made the most sense to me, and we talked about that. talked about that, because it is a cost-sharing between those who live here and those who visit us and do business here. And I thought that was a good alignment of the source of revenue with the use of the revenue. And then finally, in terms of another matching idea, was the idea of using 20-year funding versus 10-year funding, which allows us to share the cost burden between current residents and future residents. So for all of the difficulty in coming up with putting this jigsaw puzzle together, we came up with a suite of initiatives that all were things that the public had talked about at some point in the last couple of years as being really important to them. It was something that we could afford to do with using our current debt instruments, and it was something that we could afford to do if we could find just a little bit more money, which the sales tax provided. So from a Tetris perspective, I think we put together the Tetris pieces in a way that made sense. So not perfect by any stretch, not everything that everybody wanted, but not a bad package from my perspective.
Can I get you to add just something on the project list itself? Did I hear you correctly saying that the financing option and the project list both satisfactory to you?
Absolutely.
And I think Vicki, or Councilmember Hunt, you had your hand up next.
So on the funding mechanism, I appreciate the work that the Ad Hoc Committee did. And I think, conceptually, the idea of having a funding source that's current and future for these long-term projects, having the debt that will be funded by future residents who will be benefiting from these long-term transportation improvements, I think that that made sense to me. Also, that people from outside of the city that are using our transportation system and potentially buying things in our city would be also funding these transportation improvements made sense to me. So I think that funding system does make sense. I understand that it would be difficult, I think, to look at other cases where the impact has been, where they have changed the sales tax. But like Councilmember Goodman was asking about, that would be informative to me if there was any information about if it affects behavior of consumers in terms of how much people are actually buying in our city. And then if there are other cities that have gone through this process, if there's some sort of comparison information that we could get, that would be helpful. And if not, I can also be looking for that myself. But I think that information about how it affects businesses and also about how it might affect consumer behavior would be a helpful piece to that. But overall, I think that current and future consumers, current and future people in Issaquah, and then also people outside of Issaquah paying towards this, that made sense as a rationale for the sales tax. Then on the projects list, I will review the information about the Central Park signal from the services meetings when that was in discussion. I think it was before I was on council. And so I think that some more of that context would be helpful. The other piece, though, that we didn't discuss too much, we've discussed the pinch point a lot, but there's a recommendation for the pinch point, the 5.6. And then there's the recommendation for, it says nine in one place, and then it says 9.4 in another place in our information. I think it's 9.4. I think the first nine is the estimate. But that additional nine, which is bigger than the pinch point, as we've always been referring to the pinch point, we haven't discussed nearly as much.
I was going to bring that up when I got to my comments on where we're at. Do you want me to do it now?
If you would like to.
Yeah, I think it's super important. I don't think there's any value to doing just the pinch point. We have many thousands of residents who have no non-vehicle way of getting into town at all. And so I think that they don't want the pinch point done. They want a way to get into town walking and bicycling, and they have given us such unbelievable ample testament to that. And so I think that I pushed very hard to expand this one, to include the whole solution rather than just the pinch point. I don't think we would be getting anything done. I mean, we would be, you know, we would be piggybacking on some Washdott activity, great, but it would still be some distant point in the future. And they're, you know, the only neighborhood that's basically, other than with cars, completely discontiguous from the rest of town. So that's why I think it's important to, if we're going to do anything, we should do it right.
Okay, thank you for that. I think that those discussions that were had in the Ad Hoc Committee, the rationale behind those different pieces that can be articulated more clearly in the documentation of the projects, so that that's in the materials. And also, if there's a cost, I would think that there's probably, doing these things at the same time, the pinch point and then the extended area around the pinch point, that would make sense from a construction point of view to do them at once. So also the rationale behind doing these things in one go, and what that 9.6, which is a big increase over the 5.6, or 9.4, sorry, 9.4 in addition to the 5.6, what that actually looks like, because we have been talking about the 5.6 for a long time. It sounds like it was discussed in the Ad Hoc, but more information about that 9.4 that is now in addition to make that improvement, to do the whole project, right, as Councilmember Martz put it, I think. And then, so yeah, so on the list, I think I mostly touched on the concerns as far as just getting more clear rationale for why these specific ones were forward. And then some of them, like Providence Point Signal, have been in conversations, and we've been in many recent conversations about.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Patisse.
Thank you. So first of all, I just wanted to say, I know that just for years, there's so much that's gone into this, and I really appreciate the committee's work to bring forward this. I know that's not an easy conversation. And first of all, in regard to the funding mechanism, the recommendations that have been made focusing on the sales tax and the 20-year length of time seem to make sense to me. So I'm supportive in regard of what the committee has talked about in terms of the funding mechanism. In regard to the list, you know, I'm seeing all of these and having the context behind them, and I realize some of that, you know, we've got a lot more to put in to the Agenda Bill to give context to a lot of these, but we've had an opportunity to really talk these through, and great to see all of those in there. You've heard me talk at length about the pinch point in the past, being able to expand that project so we can actually put in what that community needs to be able to travel on that road, I think is critically important. It's been complicated because we've talked about the pinch point and the shoulder hardening and being able to work with Washdott and be a part of that project and get that right away. But in terms of actually finishing the project that I think the community would be thinking is the pinch point, is so people can actually have a place to safely walk and ride their bikes from those neighborhoods, I think is really important. So very supportive of seeing that there and very supportive of Providence Point, as we've talked a lot about, the southeast 43rd and the Central Park signal. I was on services, and so I would echo what Tola had talked about. That's just definitely something that sticks out in my mind in terms of all the feedback and all the community engagement that we had around that issue and the safety surrounding, you know, being in the park at night during soccer and/or whatever sport is going on, and being able to have the kind of safety that we need there, and so that park signalization. The hard part for me, and it comes, the question that I asked was, I would echo what Councilmember Winterstein talked about in terms of Newport. For me, that's so incredibly important that we are able to move forward with those projects and at some point get to completion. And that's why I had asked the question about whether there was yet another logical point beyond the right-of-way, but within the confines of what we're working through. It's very difficult, and I just want to make sure that we do all that we can to get those projects to a place where, as we talked about, that it puts us in a good place to be able to get additional grants and funding so we can continue to work on getting Newport Way, both sections, over the finish line.
Thank you. Very helpful. Council President Mertz, and I still need to hear from Councilmember Walsh.
So two concepts on this. First of all, politics being the art of the possible, the voters would certainly, I mean, to do, the hard fact is, to do Newport with our own money, as our finance director has said, would require a 30% to 40% increase in property tax. And I think we all know that there's no way that voters would approve that. So that's just where we're at. I'm really happy that the suite of improvements that we have is 38. something out of a potential 40. You know, the other concept is disagree and commit. So on December 18th of 2017, I voted against the Transportation Benefit District. The district only passed 5 to 2. Councilmember Ramos and I both voted against it, I think for the same reason, which is that I hate regressive taxes. And we have the most regressive taxes west of the Rocky Mountains in Washington State, and this will make it a little bit more so. But I believe in disagreeing and committing. And so, you know, the Ad Hoc Finance Committee came up with a suite of solutions that the three of us, you know, there were things that each of the three of us weren't super crazy about, but we got to common ground, and I'm confident that the seven of us will also come to common ground. And so I'm willing to live with the Transportation Benefit District despite not being excited about it. So for that reason, I am a yes to both of your questions.
Hey, Councilmember Walsh.
So coming into this with trying to get an understanding around our funding sources and all of this, it's a lot. I have to say, I am a bit hesitant to go to voters to ask for sales tax approval for things that are not capacity-building necessarily. And I feel like that's similar to the transportation bond of, what was it, 2015, somewhere around So I have concerns about that particularly since several of the projects are land acquisition for parks or sensitive areas, and then some things that are merely getting us through design or right-of-way acquisition and not complete project. So I do have some concerns there. That being said, Councilmember Winterstein's conversation about how much this actually costs the individual does push me forward to the point of being able to agree with the idea of investigating this further. And I think that is probably the right direction to go. I think we're going to need to be very, very, very careful about how it gets discussed with voters about what this represents, so that it is not presented as this is going to improve congestion, but rather these are quality-of-life issues, things like the Trader Joe's roundabout, things like that.
Project list as well. Comments on the project list?
Yeah, I think in general, those are all things that need to be, that we need to fund. I do have similar concerns about the idea of, again, funding right-of-way acquisitions for Newport without necessarily moving the needle on the project, particularly if we have potentially a federal requirement of, what was it, like 20 years of making movement there. So I have some concerns there, but generally, I'm in.
Okay. So I'm going to come back to you, Paul. First, I'm just going to, I'll go through a little summary. Everybody's provided feedback on at least question one. Yay, it had lots of parts to it. But project list and funding that came out of Ad Hoc, so thank you. I think we've heard some good comments from you. Also caveat that there is information asks associated with those, both on the funding and both on the project list. There are two pieces in there. They might be a subset of project lists. Some of you have commented on it, but not all of you. Are you in agreement with the scope that came out of, or what are your thoughts on the scope that came out about the Newport Way projects and drawing the line in the sand at right-of-way acquisition? One or two of you have commented on it. Either if you have an opinion you want to get out on the table, that's great. If you're fine with where they drew the line and you don't want to add anything in, that's fine, too. The other one is, only one of you brought it up, scaled up Northwest Semamish Road. So one person brought it up, and then Council President made a comment. But is there anybody else who wanted to weigh in on that as well? So those were two things on the project list that were brought up specifically, and I didn't hear from everybody on it. Councilmember Winterstein, Councilmember Ray.
I'm not sure, I know what you mean when you say scaled up.
The project changing from the original capital improvement plan or the current capital improvement plan, which had funding for pinch point something, to the full length of the project, and whether or not it's now included on this list by the Ad Hoc, and whether or not that is inappropriate.
My understanding is something different still. There is the pinch point, but on the CIP, there was actually a much larger segment of Newport Northwest Semamish Road all the way to near Timberline Park. So this is kind of in between there. And I, at first, was just about the pinch point, but then I realized, no.
Segment.
The idea from 191st, so if you live in the South Lake Semamish area and you want to come east toward the city, that you're, by only starting at 191st on the west end, you have off Semamish Road ways to travel. You can travel through that neighborhood. You can get to 191st. You can get out onto Northwest Semamish Road. And then it was very important to me that we had that lane all the way to the state park. I didn't want to stop short of that. And so I'm in support of that, and that's what we discussed in committee.
Okay, so when Councilmember Hunt then is asking for project, more project information, that is a great way of saying it, so that's super. So maybe we don't need additional comment on that. The other piece then was the Newport Way scope, whether or not that is the land in the sand, line in the sand drawn correctly. And some of you commented on it, and some of you didn't. I'm not sure if anybody wanted to add something in on that.
I actually want to rewind to what we lovingly call the pinch point. And I just like to stop calling it the pinch point because it's fairly meaningless. Can we call it South Cove Non-Motorized Connectivity?
Sure.
Thank you.
That sounds good, huh? Thank you.
We the pinch point?
Yeah.
Anyone else who wanted to comment on, I think it was specifically question two in the Agenda Bill, was, is the council supportive of the Ad Hoc Long-Term Finance Committee's recommended 38.8 million project list, including the recommended strategy for the Newport Way projects? Has everybody felt like they get on the record with that?
Is there a way that we can pursue this set but still look for ways to achieve that funding?
Yes.
That would be my preference, that doesn't push that entirely off and say, we're going to wait for federal funding, but still says, this is important to us. We recognize it's a big ask for right now, and we're not going to necessarily go after a property tax increase, but gosh darn, what are our other options there?
Sheldon, did you, or Emily, did you want to add anything to that? Or Beth?
One concept that perhaps we could develop related to the revenue projections is, you know, it's developing a package that we've got confidence in the revenue streams to support, but recognizing that there could be pluses and minuses, hopefully pluses, not minuses, because minuses would be bad. One scenario we could possibly look at would be to say, if revenues come in higher than the... One scenario we could possibly look at would be to say, if revenues come in higher than what is needed for that project list, the next thing would be to look at segments of construction on the Newport projects. And that, that could be a way of sort of balancing, how do you align revenue estimates with, with the known uncertainty that may be there? So, sort of the next up list may be a way we could package it.
If the council is in agreement, there are some next step questions as well about timing. Oh, Paul, did you want to?
Well, actually, it was timing I was wanting to.
Okay, yep, we're not done with timing. And so, in the agenda bill itself, it talks about some items that would come back. Follow-up steps for the implementation plan would likely need to include refined revenue estimates, refined project schedule, and plan for placing the 0.2% sales tax on the ballot, including timelines, which goes to some of the exact things that you had mentioned tonight you would need additional information on. So, looking for direction on how quickly the council would like to proceed with these Thoughts on timing? Councilmember Winterstein?
So, today is March 4th. I think I heard this evening that we would have to have something completed by the early May for an August, and 60 days from now feels too rushed.
Thoughts from?
So, I think giving the, giving us, but more importantly, the community more opportunity, and I would like to work back from the date where any submittal for a November election would be required. Now, that's without making any assessment on which election is better or not. It's totally driven on, on just greater opportunity for citizen input and participation.
A-doki. And Council President Murts, you had your hand up.
So, this is where it gets a little murky, because, you know, I have a, I was on the Volunteers for Schools for a long time, which does the bonds and levies for the school district. And typically, what you have is you have, you know, the body that puts forward something like this, and then you have a body that's off on the outside, that's the people that want to see it happen. And they go off and sort of talk about timing, right? And they go confer with this, that, or the other wizard, and come back. And, and I can tell you that a lot of thought goes into the timing. It is not something that you go off and say, okay, in two weeks, we're going to come back with the proposal of when the timing is. So, I don't know, I would sort of like to decouple a little bit the question of when we would put forward something to the voters. But, like, my timeline is putting something to the voters in 2020, like, not even this year. That's twofold. One is that I think you need to take sufficient time to explain what's being proposed to the voters, and, and I want to make sure that we do that. And the second is this idea of potentially getting a project under our belt before we go to the voters. And I think that, I think there'd be a lot of value in doing that. So, for, for both of those reasons, I think that we can come back and talk about what a TBD package would look like without making a decision on the specific date for a while. And now that this information is out there, members of the public could organize themselves into a, if they so choose, a supportive group, and, and go think about the, the timing issues, because there's the folks who are objectively in favor of it, we can't sit here and optimize it around making it pass. That's not our job. So, so all these comments are just born from understanding how the district gets to 70% when they, when they put these things in front of the public.
Thank you. And I have a couple of questions for administration. So, is there, are there bookends on how this funding proposal would work? Meaning, is it possible that in order to fund these projects in the manner in the years proposed, that the, going out to ballot could happen in 2020?
Well, I think that's one of the things we want to try to build, is a schedule of how to sequence the projects. And as you, many of you have spoken about, there's only so many projects that we can do under the existing debt, the no-tax portion of this funding plan. So, we would, we would need to put the projects in a certain sequence. I think certainly the further out you go on having an election means you need to probably put some sort of factor, inflation factor, on projects as well. We have not yet really done that work. We had some discussion in committee about which projects we would likely want to fund first, and that therefore could be accomplished within the available $14 million that we would have. It's, I think there are a number of factors that can be under consideration when you think you're likely to be able to get the engagement that you want to do, the information out to the public so it's well-understood, and carry out actual placing of the ballot language, conducting that election, having, having revenue, as Finance Director alluded to, start to accrue. So, there's pluses and minuses and lots of, lots of alternatives, but I think it's really, it's really about how much time the council feels like it will need to continue to discuss, and then how much time the council would like to have in advance of that election.
Great. Councilmember Goodman, Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. I think we're getting a little bit of the cart before the horse. So, this is the first time we've talked about it, and we're a couple hours into discussion, and now we're down to talking about timing for an election. And I think, I think what I'm hearing is some positive feedback from the council on the revenue strategies and the, and the list, and appreciation for all the work that the committee did, and support for taking it, taking it to the next step. But I think talking about, you know, timeline for implementing the plan, and, you know, how, you know, how people decide when to do an election, and how much time you need, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. I think the next step is to bring it back to the council when the administration and staff has time to put together the next level of information that we've asked for, and give the public an opportunity to digest what we just started talking about, because we're just digesting it, too. So, I think it's premature, and I don't have an answer to the next level of questions that you're asking. And really, I, I expressed support for the committee's recommendations at this stage, and I just think now it's time to go out to the public. And I think the next opportunity is the next time that comes back to the council. And at that point, the council can talk about what other engagement opportunities we need before we make a final decision. But that's my gut reaction tonight.
Let me go back to the administration for a section, then, and just talk about, based on the information request, you've heard of what they would like to see when it comes back again, what is the earliest possible date that you would recommend it could come back, and then I can get feedback on that.
Sure, it would be my recommendation that we look at work session in May. That would be May 13th. My rationale for that is April is wholly consumed at this point, in terms of both the work session and the committee of the whole meeting. Lot of work on strategic plan. So, I would look at the May 13th date as a date by which we could bring back the information that has been requested.
Great. So, Councilmember Goodman?
And then I guess I would also, if we want to start trying to engage the community, even at this early stage, I say we, you know, we blast that meeting out there ahead of time, so the public knows we're going to be talking about this, because it's, you know, they're going, we're going to want all the help we can get from the community in terms of where they want us to head.
So, regardless, I think it was very good the way Councilmember Winterstein phrased it, meaning let's take a walk back from the earliest we might do it. But now, recognizing that you actually have a lot of flexibility out into 2020 or beyond to do it, I'd like you to give me your comments back on the May date and see if that works for you. If we can meet the information requirements and get the advertising out there in time in a meaningful manner, is that a date that the council would like to see it come back at? Since it's fresh in your mind tonight, after your two hours of conversation. Councilmember Ray?
So, I think May would be great. The other piece of information I think would be really critical is to have a timeline that shows if we went out in this timeframe or that timeframe, what does it do to our overall budget and, and cash flow, and when would we be able to do the various initiatives, assuming that we could? And then I just want to amplify what both Councilmember Winterstein and Councilmember Goodman said, which is, we, we have time, and we should take the time, and we need input from the public, and this is a big decision, and let's get it right.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
So, I think the May timeframe to come back and have a next conversation is fantastic, unless we're trying to get on the November ballot, in which case, if we have to get something together by August. So, I would put it out that I am not in favor of going out for a 2019 ballot, because we do not have time to get adequate conversation with the public. Even though that does mean we're pushing some of these projects down, that's the unfortunate situation of saying, we're starting this conversation now, and we have to respect the fact that that's going to take some time.
Thank you. I have not heard from a few of you. Councilmember Bittis, Councilmember Hunt?
So, I would be supportive of the, the May timeframe, and, and I think that, yeah, I just, I think it's critical that we take the time that we need, and that we have the chance to talk with the community, and I think that we've learned that in, in the past. And so, but having it come back and revisiting in May makes sense.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
I am supportive of the May timeline, and am also in agreement with Councilmember Goodman's comments. The 2020 ballot, I think the two ballot, the two timings that were mentioned in the presentation were for 2019, but there's a lot of options, and there's a lot of the sequencing that's associated with those options, and that's all part of a conversation that's in addition to this, which is our first touch conversation for some of us on this. And so, supportive of the May option, and I think we'll have a lot to talk about, and hopefully we'll have a lot of community engagement between now and then, and then at that May timeline.
Thank you. I'm just going to come back to Councilmember Winterstein and Murts, because I don't know that I actually got a head nod on May from both of you. That's good.
I'm with everybody.
I think from everybody that we need to, you know, we will sell no wine before its time.
I do have one last question for you, and I'm also going to check in with administration to see if I've missed anything. However, the question is, there was a great discussion tonight, based on a body of work that took over two years to really come forward in a format that the rest of council could digest. So, thank you to the ad hoc committee, that was awesome. I'm assuming, though, and we've been talking about our processes and where things reside or live, that this is one that comes back to the full council. This is not one you're looking to say, take this back and have ad hoc work on it, you're wanting it to stay with the body. Councilmember Goodman?
I guess the one question I have then is, our new board? Where do they, where does that board fit in? It's a good question. I think because they are so early, they were not anticipated to be engaged on, on this particular issue. I think it may be a topic that will be of interest to them, and that we could present to them, but we weren't going to seek a recommendation from them. Not sure how far along they will be, for example, in May. In April, you have first introduction, if I am recalling, no, that's this month, is first introduction in March, and then a joint meeting with Transportation Advisory Board in April. So, they're still in, just onboarding at this point in time, and getting geared up to pursue the Mobility Master Plan.
It's, it just seems that it's potentially a good opportunity. I mean, we have this new board that's, this is the very topic that they've been assigned, pointed to work on. And so, I don't know the answer, but I think we will have missed an opportunity, and it just seems also just very weird if they get skipped somehow. And so, I don't know what the answer is, and I, and I don't know how that, how they might get involved, but I just leave that out there for consideration.
Sure, and just to clarify, all that I'm saying is, we weren't going to seek some sort of action by that board, but I would be happy to make sure that they're aware, informed, have an opportunity to provide some input.
And I just want to ask a follow-up question, if that's okay. The Transportation Advisory Board now is sort of in this orientation session, drinking through a fire hose, kind of like Councilmember Walsh is. And I think what I'm hearing from the question and the answer is that they won't be, it won't be a work plan item for them to see what you're going to see and provide a recommendation to you for the May. However, we have a long runway, because you've all made it very clear that you want to have a public engagement process that's meaningful and have a thoughtful process. So, I'm imagining there is, there is involvement for them, but not before May, if that makes sense.
It does, I'm, you know, I'm.
Thank you. So, you have answered all of the questions that I had. I just want to take a double check and look back at staff, and see administrator, and see if you've gotten everything that you need in terms of direction, and with our deputy city clerk, to see if there's an official way of making a motion to provide direction, or this informal manner worked out fine. Fabulous. Questions?
I just want to make a comment.
Comment, go ahead.
So, so I realize we haven't made any firm decisions this evening. Everybody, there's still information that people want. Nevertheless, I'm really excited about the conversation that we had tonight. The Ad Hoc Finance Committee has been working on this in, you know, sort of the dark for a long time now, and been eager to discuss this both with the rest of council and with the community. And so, I'm just thrilled that we're now, this, this conversation is, is out in, out in the daylight, and, and, and has seen some, some initial enthusiasm for parts of it from the rest of the council. I do want to thank Director Goldberg, and Director Lynn, and City Administrator Moon for all the hard work that they put in, in, in getting us to this point. And eager to see where we go from here.
And I. Are there any other final comments? Are we ready to move to good of the order? Good of the order. Do any council members have any items for good of the order? I have a few that I would like to add. Just an update on some upcoming council meetings. There's a council work session on March 11th, and the potential agenda items include Transit Oriented Development Opportunity Center update, Mobility Master Plan introduction, citywide strategic plan, and council rules of procedure. At least it's all small. March 18th, regular council meeting. Prior to the regular council meeting, a special council meeting for an executive session will occur at 5:45 PM in the Cougar Room. The regular meeting potential agenda items include, oh, Chris, you have to get, Councilmember, you have to give me, what's your new name for the pinch point?
Oh, South Cove Non-Motorized Transport, Connectivity.
Non-motorized?
Connectivity.
Activity, so, not sure when, there may be a name change, but the regular meeting potential agenda items include Northwest Samamish, I can't even read what I wrote down there. Okay, not using the word. Pinch point, projectwash.fundingrequest. Thank you.
Worked really well.
There is no executive session this evening, so there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 10:30.